The hour of 6:30 having come and gone, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, November 21, 2023, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Slack.
President.
Slack is president. Alder Tischler.
Here.
Alder Tischler is president. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is president. Alder Vitiver.
Here.
Alder Vitiver is president. Aldo Wihelya.
Here.
Aldo Wihelya is president. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is president. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Conklin is president. Alder Curry.
Here.
Curry is president. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is president. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is president. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is president. Alder Figueroa Cole.
Yes.
Alder Figueroa Cole is president. Alder Govindarajan.
Yes.
Alder Govindarajan is president. Alder Harrington McKenney.
McKenney here.
Alder McKenney is president. Alder Nax.
Here.
Alder Nax is president. Aldo Latimer Burris is excused. Aldo Madison.
Here.
Aldo Madison is president. Aldo Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford is president. Aldo Miyazee.
Present.
Aldo Miyazee is president. Aldo Rumel.
Present.
Aldo Rumel is president. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. As always, I'll remind us that we're here to do the business of the residents of the city of Madison and ask that we do so with kindness and respect. Are there any disclosures or recusals on today's agenda? Seeing none. Seeing none. We'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, and, two, items which alders have separated out for discussion debate purposes. Agenda items that are supermajority. Note, supermajority votes. Items will be recorded as unanimous unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 23, Legislative File 80241, approving a certified survey map of property located at 2012 through 2020 Chadbourne Avenue in the University Heights Historic District. Report of the Planning and Community and Economic Development, 14 votes required. Agenda item number 24, Legislative File Number 80242, approving a certified survey map of property located at 6323 through 6425 Odana Road. Also, the report of the Department and Planning and Community and Economic Development, 14 votes required. Agenda item number 25, Legislative File Number 80243, approving a certified survey map of property located at 4621 Dutch Mill Road and 4701 Elsted Drive. 14 votes required. Agenda item number 26, Legislative File Number 80802, reapproving a certified survey map of property located at 519 to 547 West Washington Avenue. Agenda item number 27, Legislative File Number 80820, reapproving the final plat of the American Center East Park Sixth Edition on property addressed as 4711 East Park Boulevard. Agenda item number 32, Legislative File Number 80650, authorizing the issuance and establishing the parameters for the sale of tax-exempt bonds not to exceed 28,605,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, and directing the final approval of the terms thereof. Please note, agenda item number 32 is also listed under recommendations different than the agenda for correction. Agenda item number 34, Legislative File Number 80855, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract for the purchase of software and professional services for analyzing and reducing traffic accidents, and authorizing mayor and clerk to enter into an ancillary agreement with UW Madison Traffic Operations and Safety Lab to facilitate data sharing. Agenda item number 35, Legislative File Number 79968, approving the preliminary plat of the East Metals Estate on property addressed as 5803 Lean Road. Agenda item number 36, Legislative File Number 79969, approving the preliminary and final plats of the Village at Autumn Lake on property addressed as 2012 through 2202 Winsor Street, as well as 1901 through 1937 Firefly Drive. Agenda item number 37, Legislative File Number 79992, approving a certified survey map of property located at 405 through 407 and 431 West Quorum Street, 408 through 430 West Johnson, and 304 through 318 North Broom. Agenda item number 38, Legislative File Number 80003, approving a certified survey map of property located at 4510 through 4514 Packers Avenue. Following our agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item number 20, Legislative File Number 80751, awarding Public Works Contract for the State Street Campus Garage Mixed Use Project. The recommended action is for a council to adopt from the Board of Public Works. Agenda item number 28, Legislative File Number 80719, approving the 2024 Operating Plan for Madison Central Bid. The recommended action is for council to adopt. As well as agenda item number 32, which was previously read. The following items are excluded by either one request of alders or speakers registered by 6:30 on November 21. Agenda item number two, Legislative File Number 80307, amending map related to downtown height limits of the Madison General Ordinance to update the downtown height map in the Brayton Lot area. Speakers are registered. Agenda item number four, Legislative File Number 80281, adopting an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. Speakers registered. Agenda item number five, Legislative File 80329, substitute, creating a section of the Madison General Ordinance to change zoning of property located at 405 through 407 and 311 West Quorum, 408 through 430 West Johnson, 304 through 318 North Broom in the 4th Aldermanic District from PD, CN, and UMX to UMX District. Speakers registered. Agenda item number 30, Legislative File Number 80423, authorizing the inclusion of a land use restriction agreement as an exhibit to the purchase of sale agreement between Core Spaces and the city for the purchasers' acquisition of the property located at 405 West Quorum. And items introduced from the floor, Legislative File Number 80848, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, introduced by Aldo Wihelya, will be before the council at the December 5 meeting. Legislative File Number 80884, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the state DOT for the design and construction for retrofitting older inefficient streetlights to energy-efficient LED fixtures citywide through the carbon reduction program, introduced by Mayor Rhodes Conway, to be referred to the Transportation Commission meeting of November 29, then to the Finance Committee meeting of November 27, to return the common council on December 5. Legislative File Number 80886, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract amendment to the system supply and maintenance agreement entered into on February 10, 2016, to extend coverage for Transit Master and Chapeau's back office software that went out of warranty at the end of 2023. The cost of this contract amendment will not exceed 693,000 in the Transit Utility 2024 operating budget. Introduced by Aldo Govindarajan, to be before Finance Committee of November 27, return to common council on December 5. Legislative File 80894, condemning Islamophobia and antisemitism, introduced by Aldo Wihelya, to return to council on December 5. Legislative File Number 80937, authorizing the city engineer or designated to apply for the low-income communities' bonus credit under the Inflation Reduction Act, introduced by Mayor Rhodes Conway, to return to common council on December 5. Legislative File Number 80938, amending resolutions by extending the commencement deadline related to TIF investment in the Roth Street Limited Partnership and Roth Street II Limited Partnership projects located at 2007 Roth Street, introduced by Aldo Latimer Burris, to be referred to the Finance Committee of November 27, return to common council on December 5. Legislative File Number 80939, authorizing the double fill of firefighter positions in the city of Madison Fire Department in order to run two recruit academies in 2024 and maintain staffing following planned and anticipated retirements. Introduced by Aldo Revere, to be before the Finance Committee of November 27, and return to common council on December 5. Agenda items with corrections are agenda item number 31, Legislative File Number 80649, authorizing not to exceed bonds by City of Madison for reconstruction of the State Street Campus Garage. The district was not included, as well as for agenda item 67, Legislative File Number 80825, for a annual performance contract for the Overture Center, including that it is in District 4.
Thank you, President Curry. Are there additional items that alders would like to have separated from the consent agenda? Aldo Figueroa Cole?
Item 40, Legislature Number 80569.
40.
40. Thank you.
Alder Slack?
Just want to make sure, I know 4 is already excluded, and 39 also is not on the consent agenda, correct? I just want to make sure.
We can exclude 39 as well.
Yep.
Any other items that council members would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? Seeing none. We'll go through that quickly again. That was a lot. So, the following are supermajority items which require 14 votes. 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 34, 35, 36, 37, and 38. Item 32 requires 15 votes. On item 20 and 28, the recommendation is to adopt. On items 31 and 67, note that we're including the districts, respectively District 2 and District 4, in the titles. And then, the following items will be excluded from the consent agenda, 2, 4, 5, 30, 39, and 40. Alder Bennett?
Could you repeat the exclusion list for tonight?
Yep. So, the excluded items are 2, 4, 5, 30, 39, and 40. Are there any other items? Oh, and then, sorry, we have a slew of things introduced from the floor tonight. I will not read through all of them, but... There are seven items being introduced from the floor. Seeing... Nothing else. Alder Bennett, did you have something additional? Alder Bennett, you're muted if you're speaking.
Sorry, I still have a hand up from last time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then, on the consent agenda, President Curry?
Moved to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Alder Field?
Yes, Mayor. I apologize for missing the disclosures part of the agenda on items 30 and 34. I work for UW Madison, and that will not affect my vote on either item.
Thank you, Alder Field. Will note that disclosure? Alder Tischler?
Yeah, I should probably disclose I also work for university as well, but it will not affect my vote.
Thank you, Alder. Anything else on the consent agenda? If not, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record that vote. And... Move on to public comment. Our first item for public comment is agenda item number 2, which is amending map related to downtown height limits, the Brayton Lot area in District 6. On item 2, our first registrant is Matt Gaullik. It seems that the districts are not appearing in my list, so of Franklin Street, to be followed by Ian Jamison, to be followed by Janelle Allen. Matt?
Hi. I live on South Franklin Street in the First Settlement District that is next to the Brayton Lot, but I don't think that you should listen to me because of that. A major contributor to Madison's housing shortage is a well-intentioned process where we collect feedback from nearby residents about proposed zoning changes, new construction, and so on. The people with the time and resources to give this feedback and attend these meetings are typically white, wealthy homeowners, and they're often retired. They don't want to see their neighborhood change. We rarely hear from those who need the housing that we aren't permitting to be built. You were elected to do what's best for the city of Madison, not to protect neighborhood fabric or preserve views for a few homeowners. I urge you to do what's best for the city of Madison. Having said that, I will tell you what I think is best in this case. A parking lot that's a few blocks from the Capitol and a couple blocks from a BRT station is exactly the type of place where we should permit density. It's not in the historic district. It's next to it, and it should be zoned for 10 stories.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ian Jamison of East Washington, to be followed by Janelle Allen, to be followed by Josh Olson. Ian? Do we have Ian online?
Nope, there is no one by that name.
Okay. Then, Janelle Allen of East Wilson Street, to be followed by Josh Olson, to be followed by Leo Strand.
Good evening. I'm here, I guess I have two issues with the current proposal. The first is, it's only been 11 years since you folks passed a law to protect the First Settlement. Seems pretty short order to be deciding only 11 years later that it's time to change those rules. I hear the gentlemen from the First Settlement proposing increasing the height at the neighborhood meeting that we heard less than two weeks ago. One of the men who works for the city informed us that, in fact, if what you really want is affordability in housing, then the housing needs to be no higher than about five floors, given that the construction of the high-rises is a much more expensive process using metal and cement instead of wood. So, if what you want is maximal affordability for part of that, maintaining the current four, and I saw that it might be five stories, that seems an insignificant change, but maintaining four or five stories for that lower section, in fact, increases the ability to provide lower-income housing. When you're talking about housing that's 70% or 80% of what you could get for full rent, when you're downtown, 70% or 80% is not going to be affordable housing. You are still pulling from a demographic who can afford higher rent. So, I like very much the idea of increasing affordable housing. It seems to me that doing it a little bit further from the center of town, where prices for land go down, you're going to get a lot more bang for the buck for affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Josh Olson of Raymond Road, to be followed by Leo Strand, to be followed by Jim Scrantney. Josh?
Hello, I'm Josh Olson. I'm from southwest Madison in District 20. I wanted to thank Alder Bennett and the rest of the alders who were sponsoring this legislation. I think this is a great improvement for getting more housing in Madison. I also wanted to thank the people at Metro, or whoever in the city was involved in getting this funding and repurposing this parking lot into what it can now be. I think this is a great project. I'm really happy we were able to find something, and I think this has been planned for 30 years, and it's good to see some movement on it. For me, I think moving up to 10 stories is super important to increasing housing in Madison. More supply means more affordability. We're seeing that across the country in cities that are increasing their supply. Madison is not one of them. We're seeing our rents increase. I think just getting more out there is the best solution. Even those people who want to subsidize our housing and make it super affordable for the deepest affordable units, the person at the neighborhood meeting said that we need five-over-ones, four-over-ones, and right now, that wouldn't be allowed at a four-story limit. I'm also a little bit concerned that if we won't increase our supply of housing in the downtown core, where are we going to increase the supply? Because I'm seeing even more resistance in the suburb areas of Madison. So, I think this is a great spot. It's right next to BRT. It is right next to the Capitol. It's a walkable area. There's a grocery store across the street. This is a place where we should try and get more residents. I will also speak for the new neighbors who would move into those units and say that this is more housing for them. There is more community. There are jobs. Again, easy access to BRT. There's also tax revenue in this. So, I think if you are wanting to support this amendment, you are supporting more housing in the city, more affordability, more tax revenue, and less debt, and all of that makes sense over the 1% of potential issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Leo Strand of University Ave, to be followed by Jim Scrantney, to be followed by Dan O'Brien. Leo?
Hi there. I'm Leo. I'm a student at UW, and I grew up in Milton, Wisconsin, which is about 45 minutes away. I always had the dream of living in Madison, going to Madison. It's always kind of been like the place to be, the place to go. I'm a sophomore now, and I kind of realize the financial aspect of it, so like, just trying to graduate early. Right now, I'm taking 18 credits, an internship at the Capitol, and working part-time. So, this is the first time I've ever been able to be at a meeting, because my night band class got canceled for Thanksgiving. So, I'm here to implore people to think of the young people moving in, not even young not even young, just people. Because right now, as much as I would love to stay in Madison, as much as I love the community I've met, the people I've met, just everything about the city, in every logical way, it makes sense for me to go to the Twin Cities or another big metropolis, because it's expensive here, and I don't really see a lot of change that would benefit me. And I think this is an amazing opportunity that we really can't pass up. And I think it would be a huge detriment to our city as like a growing, you know, being, to really not take advantage of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jim Scrantney of East Maine, to be followed by Dan O'Brien, to be followed by Lindsay Lee. Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Scrantney. My partner and I have been residents of First Settlement Neighborhood since the early 2000s. We are one of the fortunate ones who do own one of the historic homes in the First Settlement's local historic district. I was also the Chair of the First Settlement District of Capitol Neighborhoods for many years. First, I'd like to say that I'm excited to see the Brayton Lot will soon be developed after decades of waiting. Over those many years, the First Settlement Neighborhood has put in countless hours and thousands of dollars planning for the Brayton Lot's development. We have always viewed the Brayton Lot as a location for density in our neighborhood, and we look forward to this amazing opportunity in welcoming more residents into our neighborhood. In fact, the Brayton Lot, in previous plans, had been much lower density. But for the downtown plan, we made a huge increase in the Brayton Lot's density, raising about three-quarters of the lot to ten stories, when previously only one building in the northwest corner was ten stories. But we've always planned for strips along East Main and South Hancock Streets of the Brayton Lot as a transition in height to the one, two, and three-story buildings in the First Settlement Historic District on the other side of those streets. Those strips are the ones that you see along East Main, and then only partially along South Hancock. We just went around, a little bit around the corner for that when we were working on the downtown plan. This kind of transition in height is not unusual, and it's not a special request. It's good urban design that's implemented in many locations throughout the city. The plan for this transition is important to the First Settlement Neighborhood and has been in place for decades. Eliminating this transition area under the current map is being proposed for more affordable housing, and I'm for that. I voted for it at the city's Block 113 redevelopment meeting. There's a clear desire for affordable housing, and I'm glad the Brayton Lot will be part of the solution through its RFP language and with the opportunity of additional floors, given the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Eliminating this transition area won't solve the affordable housing problem, but it could result in a one-hundred-and-forty-four-foot cliff on First Settlement's narrow neighborhood streets. Imagine being at the intersection of South Butler and East Main, looking down the hill on East Main, away from the Capitol. On your right, on the south side, you have one- and two-story buildings in the First Settlement Historic District. And on the left is the potential for a ten-story building.
Jim, that's your time, Jim. Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan O'Brien of South Franklin, to be followed by Lindsay Lee.
Good evening. I'm strongly in favor of a dense development of the Brayton Lot. I am strongly in favor of high-rise development up to ten stories along East Washington Avenue. I'm strongly in favor of affordable housing. I am opposed to this amendment because the current zoning code addresses all those needs. There is no reason to change it. The current code zoning that was adopted, as someone pointed out, a mere, I believe, eleven years ago, through the hard efforts of the district residents in conjunction with council members and the Planning Commission to help develop, the current zoning code allows for high-density development where it belongs, along East Washington, and lower levels, but still high-density, along the narrow streets of Hancock and Main. As we pointed out, we're looking at mainly two and a, mainly one or two three-story buildings, encompassed by a ten-story building across a narrow street. And this is done, this proposal is made without, with no evidence that going up to ten stories throughout that lot is going to increase affordable housing. In fact, the evidence is to the contrary. The evidence is that missing-middle housing is what's required, which is more in the nature of four- and five-story developments. That's how you can, the best avenue for providing affordable units. So yes, the current plan was actually prescient. It now is the model for allowing for both high-rise development and lower-rise, less costly development that will allow for more affordable units. And I believe Alder Rumel is going to produce, propose a substitute amendment to maybe, to allow for that, and that would be fine. I don't think it's necessary, because I think the current plan already addresses that, especially with the new ordinance that allows for bonus stories for affordable units. So I think, taking the radical step of amending the zoning code without any real evidence that it's going to accomplish what it's set out to do, is the wrong way to go. We're basically being asked to trust the developers on this. Yes, we'll allow them to do ten stories, but it doesn't mean that they will go to ten stories. Well, I think they will, and we're going to have a canyon. Why don't we just stick with the current code and trust that the developers will be able to work within that to provide the density and the affordability that will, that they should be able to provide in this, without having to radically alter the ordinance? Because after all, why do we have a zoning code in the first place? To guide developers, to guide the council. And it shouldn't be changed just because, on a whim, the idea is that this might increase affordability, but we're not sure. Thank you.
That's your time. Next up is Lindsay Lee of Williamson Street, to be followed by Ian Jamison. Lindsay?
I sent an email this morning, so I hope you had a chance to read that. We need affordable housing on this city-owned lot. I hope everyone agrees with that. We also need, we need affordable, below-market-rate housing that works. Unfortunately, we have a couple examples right now that are not working very well. And, you know, that is, to some degree, undermining people's belief that we can, the city, can promote affordable, below-market-rate housing and have it be successful. This needs to be a successful project. By having two different lots, one zoned at ten, which is for, as is being argued by the Alder that is pushing for this, will be for a market rate, and having one that will be wood-built at six stories, or five stories, or four stories, and that would be for below-market rate. We need to have blended incomes. I think we're learning we need to have a project, a block, that is blended, where people are not defined by their economic circumstances. What is being pushed by having two different height levels is you won't get that. And we might look back and say, that was another tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak is Ian Jamison of East Washington.
Hi. I am a District Six resident, and I think, more importantly in this case, I live on East Main, which is the road that we are discussing right now. I, time and time again, members of this council and the city talk about a housing crisis. And I think for younger folks in my generation, it is important to see that there is action taken with those words. So I've heard people register and respond to this measure by calling it radical to explore every possible option to squeeze out every single affordable unit that we can from the city-owned lot that my tax dollars go to. I think the radical thing is not exploring every nook and every cranny. We've heard people cast doubt on whether this will lead to more affordable units. What I have not heard is anybody say with full certainty that it will not. And to me, when we're in the middle of a housing crisis, we, if we have a chance to even add one more affordable unit, one more working-class unit to this city, three blocks from downtown, we need to take it, and we need to bring every tool in the toolbox to this fight against unaffordable housing. So I would strongly urge you to support this and to put affordable housing for the residents of Madison ahead of aesthetics or personal preferences in the look or feel. Let's give developers every opportunity they possibly can. We are not trusting or relying on developers. The city owns the land. The city will dictate how this gets built out. And we're a democracy, we elected you. I trust you to make sure that workforce housing and affordable housing is part of that proposal. I want as many units as possible, and I want as many of them to be as affordable as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So the last registrant we have wishing to speak on Item Two. Are there questions for any of the registrants on Item Two? Alder Harrington-McKinnon?
Yes, thank you. I would like Lindsay Lee to come back to answer a couple of questions. Thank you, Lindsay. So I did read your statement that you sent to all Alders, and there are two paragraphs that I'd like for you to expand on for me. And it was the paragraph that started, "Instead of segregating people with limited income from everyone else on this very large site, we need to blend the units to create a diverse community that is made up of different incomes." And then the second quest, the second item I'd like for you to speak to, specifically when you said, "It is very important for the city council to understand that we are quickly losing the confidence of our citizens in our ability to build affordable housing." Could you expand on what you meant when you put that into your correspondence?
Alder, it's very important that the city of Madison is successful in taking the lead in building below-market-rate affordable housing. No one else can do it. No one else can do it. So it's incumbent on you to make sure it is successful. If it's not successful, it undermines even people of goodwill that we can't be successful, we can't do a good job. It doesn't work. We do know, because there's many cases that don't make the newspaper, where it does work. I think the evidence points to having people live in communities where there's a range of income, and people are not defined, because they live in this building, they're obviously poor, and they live in this building, they're obviously rich, or, you know, they're well, you know, better off. Instead, you know, having the flexibility of ten stories where it can be designed, and the RFP will determine how much we will ask developers to propose, you know, that they have to meet some standard of affordability. Let that process play out. Don't handicap, you know, don't limit the choices right out of the gate. And then, concerning whether there should be a step back in design issues, that can be hashed out at the Urban Design Commission and the Plan Commission. But what we don't want to see, what is being proposed as an alternative, that we're going to have a section that will be wood-built, and that's where there's going to be affordability, and, you know, of course, you know, the concrete tower will be market-rate, which we all know will be much more expensive and will shut out income diversity. Is that good, Alder? Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I have questions for Justice.
Do we have Justice with us?
It does not appear that Justice is online.
Well, I don't think he's here, Alder.
Okay. I will hold off questions to that.
Thank you. Alder Evers?
Thanks, Mayor. Lindsay Lee, please.
Sorry, Lindsay.
Thank you for the workout.
Yeah, thanks, Lindsay, for being here. You're speaking about the concept of mixed-income developments. Would it be possible to do mixed income, including some market-rate units, in these, in a, in a building where the construction style increases the possibility of having more affordability? But again, you could still have, wouldn't you be able to do mixed income in this? There's nothing that would prevent that, is that right?
In the concrete building or the wood building?
In the wood building, and you could also do mixed income as well. You could have market-rate units in the mixed one, too. You could do actually mixed income in both, couldn't you?
Sure, and why not let that process play out? Why limit, you know, limit, you know, divide the property and say, we don't want to, you know, we just want proposals with, you know, these limits placed on it.
But wouldn't it make sense, if the building style increased the possibility of affordability, that you might be able to do more mixed income in one versus the other? Isn't that a reasonable thing for policymakers to consider?
It's not for me to tell you what you should consider, of course. You should, you should consider everything.
Okay.
But, you know, if the city, and the RFP is going to be very important, of course, and if the RFP requires, you know, a certain number of units or a certain percentage of units, get all the proposals and compare them. It might turn out, it might turn out that, you know, the whole lot will be no taller than six stories, because to meet that goal will require the less expensive construction method, not the density. But let's see, what's the point of, right now, before the RFP has even been developed, to say, nope, the back, I can promise you, if you do the substitute amendment, where you have, you know, once again, two separate, you know, zoning heights, all the developers are going to say, you know, all the affordable housing will be in the wood construction, and all of the market rate will be in the concrete construction. I mean, that's not my argument. That, that is the argument of the District Six Alder, so. I'll let the Alder speak for herself.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may want to hang around, Lindsay. No? Okay. Alder Rumel?
Well, I guess you're right. I guess I want to just take the moment, if everyone will give me the opportunity, to tell my constituent Lindsay, who I do respect, that I never said the tower would not have affordable housing in it. It's quoted from my blog. And my question is, Lindsay, I know that you would work hard for a mixed-income project, and I hope that's what we're going to do, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Alder. That skirted on the edge of not being a question. All right, I have no other. Alder Bennett, your hand is still up.
Yeah, I was just looking for Justice, but like, maybe, is it okay if when he's available to come back to this, please?
No, Alder, we're, we're at, there's no other Alders with questions. No, Alder, we're, we're at, there's no other Alders with questions, so we're at the end of questions for this item.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
All right, so that's it for item two. And we'll move on to item four, which is adopting an amendment to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. First registrant is Josh Olson of Raymond Road, to be followed by Diane Sorensen, to be followed by Sean Sebel. Josh?
Quick question. This is Regent Street.
Is this the entire comprehensive plan, a subset of which is Regent Street?
Okay, thank you. I'll keep it quick. Like I said before, I think increasing supply makes it more affordable here in Madison. I was close to Regent Street about four years ago, when I was a student here. I definitely think that there's a ton of opportunity to build up. I think also for the neighborhood in that area, it's in their best interest to try and get more students closer to the university than to continue to spread into the neighborhood. That is something that they often bring up. I say let them build up closer to the university. Yeah, in general, just housing is good. Please increase the housing. Thank you. Actually, one more thing. Just in case anyone was wondering, 11 years ago, I was in eighth grade, so couldn't participate in this process. I'm glad I can participate now.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Diane Sorensen of San Juan Drive, to be followed by Sean Sebel, to be followed by Lynn Green.
Hello, this is Diane Sorensen. Am I unmuted?
You are.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the council. My decision to speak tonight is to ask the council to table for 30 days the proposal before the council to, to define selected conditions that trigger the escalation clause. And the reason for the deferral is to allow the homeowners and the stakeholders who, who would be affected by such escalation to participate in defining the factors that would trigger the escalation. I live near Old Sock Road, and there are two parcels on that road that are ripe for development. We support developing those parcels and believe that development along the lines of the missing-middle housing, duplexes, quads, townhouses, small, into single houses, would be most appropriate for that property because the property on 360 degrees around that property, it's surrounded by one- and two-story residential homes. The property is currently listed as low-medium residential in the future land use plan. As you all know, that would allow development up to 30 dwelling units in three stories. The escalator, we are told, would be applied to this land. The escalator would provide for development up to 70 dwelling units and four stories on this property. There are close to four acres, and we're told there could be as many as 267 units in four-story complexes. That would be a huge development, and such development, which I believe would follow if the escalator is applied, would, of course, eliminate any possibility of developing the missing-middle housing. The present escalator clause is undefined, so nobody can tell when it should be applied, but we're told it does apply. If the council adopts the factor set forth by the plan, by the planning department, they will do so without any input from any homeowner affected by this escalator clause. And the escalator clause more than doubles the amount of, the density of dwelling units on the proposed land.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registrant is Sean Sebel of Black River Road in Verona, to be followed by Lynn Green, to be followed by Douglas Meyer. Sean?
Sean, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Sean, you're going to need to unmute yourself on your side.
The prompt may be behind an application. Or star six.
Sean, we're going to go on to the next person and come back to you. Next registrant is Lynn Green of Old Sock Road, to be followed by Douglas Meyer, to be followed by Deborah McCauley-Forestall.
Lynn, you're unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Green. My husband and I have owned a house in District 19 for 43 years and have been residents of Madison since 1965. Yes, we are senior citizens. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I will be brief. We submitted written testimony regarding my husband and my concerns on item four and our request to postpone action on the escalator clause language. To respect your time, I will not repeat those detailed concerns. Let me just say that whether there is a difference of opinion or not about what the language in item four means regarding the escalator clause, there is clearly an outcry of opposition by Madison citizens regarding any language that promotes high-density housing without lots of opportunity for public input and consideration. There is clearly a place for high-density housing. As Director of Dane County Human Services for over 17 years, I cited many-day services and housing facilities and recognized the need for them. I have also, I also know that citing is a major issue and cannot be taken lightly. It is clear that city, that city residents, not just those concerned about the proposed development on Old Sock by Stone House, want to be active participants in how these housing options are cited. Any language that appears to allow for automatic variances is of major concern. Please postpone any action on the item four escalator clause language that appears to allow for an automatic variance to 70 units per acre and over three stories. Your constituents are pleading for more time to have input into this language and a better understanding of what it means. I know and I highly respect a number of you. You have always said that constituent input was important to you in your decisions. At the beginning of the meeting, our Honorable Mayor indicated, quote, "that you were there to do the business of the residents." Please demonstrate that by postponing action on this agenda item. Thank you so much for your time and your commitment to Madison, a city we all love to call home.
Thank you. We'll try again for Sean.
Okay, Sean, you should have a prompt on your phone.
Sean, you're going to have to unmute yourself on your side in order for us to hear you.
Possibly try a star six.
Apologies, Sean, but if you could email allalders@cityofmadison.com with your comment, they'll be able to read it. That is our last registrants wishing to speak on item four. Are there questions for any of the registrants on item four? Seeing none. And we will go on. Alder Figaro call?
So I, to item four, yes. I do have a couple of questions for Justice Castellania. He's registered to answer questions.
On item four, yes, and I think we do have Justice now. Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Hi, Justice. So on regard to this elevator clause that is being discussed on the comprehensive plan, can you share the significance of that clause across the city?
Sure. I think, first of all, good evening. My apologies, I, you know, it's been a day, but I appreciate everybody. I think the main thing here, and just kind of looking at the last, we'll just say, four years of the ways that I would say, very creative ways, that both staff, our current mayor and the common council has really tried to think through the maximum, like maximizing the limited options that you have to actually address housing shortages. And you guys have done an amazing job at, you know, again, with the limitations you have due to preemption and the challenges you're going to have without having a state government that's supportive of what you guys are trying to do in terms of increasing affordability. This is what we're seeing. And I think in, just from a meta-analysis of this, as with many of the proposals that have come forth from this administration and from this council as a, as a general statement, they're not all overly aggressive. These are things that are giving you all, as a common council, and giving us as a public, the maximum tools to increase housing and to leverage all of the things that you guys are doing in terms of increasing the Affordable Housing Fund and increasing a number of the service, the, the budgets for services that support the housing, and that, that's what this is, more than anything else. And I think giving the maximum amount of tools, recognizing that you still have a lot in the way of oversight, especially if and when developers or housing providers are trying to get money from the city or utilize any of the pools or resources from the city or the county, that you haven't lost anything there. And I, again, I've spent, since I was asked to look at this thing, I spent a lot of time kind of going into it, and there's nothing in here that, I, I don't see anything that would overtly or aggressively prohibit or inhibit the type of robust dialogue around any theoretical or hypothetical proposed development that, you know, Madison is so great at. So I guess that's kind of what I would say about this. I think it's, again, this along with some of the things you guys have already discussed tonight, I think these are really great things that are giving you the maximum amount of tools to leverage whatever you can provide in the way of support to increase the housing stock of all types here in Madison. Did I answer your question, Alder Figaro?
Yes, I think I got it. I mean, again, so this is something that impacts the entire city, not just one specific neighborhood or area or whatever. So these changes impact the entire city of Madison.
Right. No, absolutely. And I, I think there's just so much, and I really appreciate, anyway, I could keep going with this, but yeah, yes, the answer is yes, that's right.
Thank you, Justice.
Thank you, Alder. And my apologies, I failed to refresh. Leo Strand of University Ave had wanted to speak on item four.
Thank you for refreshing. To begin with, I want to say I was in eighth grade five years ago, so I think I have you beat. But I, I would say to support this measure, I think if you, as someone around the campus area a lot, and this isn't about the escalator clause more, it's that, you know, that infill near campus Regent Street area. I live on campus, I work at a bike shop near Regent Street, so I'm there a lot, and there's a lot of opportunity there. And I think if you talk to any student, like, talk to any student, I was in, like, September, I was already freaking out about where I was living in a year. And I, I think a lot of people that, you know, may, maybe own a house or have other mind just need to look up how much rent is because it's insane. And I, I think that, like other people have said, people like, you know, students, people that have busy schedules, that, I, I think the people that are going to be in low-income housing, they, they don't come here. And I, I think that's important to acknowledge, too. But either way, I fully support this measure, and I think everyone else should, too.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask once more on item four, if there are any questions for registrants. All right, seeing none. We'll go on to item five, which is a substitute amending the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at 405 through 407 and 311 West Gorm Streets, 408 through 430 West Johnson Street, 304 through 318 North Broom Street, all in the 4th Aldermanic District. First registrant is Jeff Zalisko of Deer Park, representing Core Spaces, to be followed by Brian Munson, to be followed by Doug Tichner. Jeff?
Actually, Madam Mayor, if Doug Tichner could lead off for the team, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any objection? All right, Doug?
And Doug is online.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Hi, this is Doug Tichner, developer for Core Spaces, calling in tonight to voice my support for the project at Johnson and Broom. Really excited about this project and very sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. This project is a 14 and eight-story multifamily building with 465 units. You can scroll down, and we can land on the next page. Next one, please. Next one. Next, there's a location, yep. Next one, please. We can linger here for a second. It's a multifamily building, 14 and eight stories, with studios to five-bedroom units and commercial uses along Gorm Street, including a lobby and amenity along North Broom Street and West Johnson. This project completely adheres to the downtown plan, the downtown design guidelines and the downtown height map. The overall project you'll see, as Jeff Zalisko talks about it, is organized into four distinct buildings with two distinct towers. The character is gracefully responding to adjoining buildings and the design datum of the neighborhood. The project utilizes the newly adopted height ordinance amendment to incorporate additional floors for, to include affordable housing for students. The affordability ordinance, or the newly adopted height ordinance, identifies the opportunity for a voluntarily, voluntary income and rent-restricted units through the contribution of the surplus engineering parcel, which is located at the corner of West Gorm Street and North Broom Street. The, additionally, the affordable student housing is proposed for the project, it's utilizing what we call the OLIV model, which was established at our, our project right across the street, whereas 10% of the beds located in two-bedroom double occupancy units receive a 40% discount to market rates. In this instance, it's over a 40-year time period, whereas OLIV was for 30. This is a voluntary program, and it was done through the cooperation and collaboration with UW Financial Aid Office in the City of Madison. Ultimately, the design reflects the overall height that is allowed in the downtown height map, and we're avoiding encroachment into the capital view preservation limit. Other benefits associated with this, you can please go to the next page. Other benefits?
You have about 20 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. Other benefits include adding additional, up to an additional 1,600 beds to the market, vibrant amenities both inside and outside in common spaces, as well as utilizing best-in-class construction practices.
Finish your sentence, please.
Best-in-class labor.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Brian Munson of Lakeside Street, again, representing Core Spaces.
All right, thank you. Again, Brian Munson with Vandewell and Associates here on behalf of Core Spaces. Excited to be here after a significant amount of time. We've been working on this project in conversation with all the revere city staff, other Alders, the neighborhood, pretty much anybody who would be willing to talk for more than a year. So we're glad to be close to the finish line with, as Chris Wells said at the Plan Commission, a bingo card of approvals. We've covered a lot of ground with some of the approvals that have been issued by the Plan Commission and the other items tonight, but we're glad to be here with a creative solution to the housing needs for students on campus. This is one of the first projects to both implement the downtown plans and the new downtown height ordinance definition. height ordinance definitions through the delivery of affordable student housing. If you could go to the next slide, please. Actually, two more. There we go. As we said, with all our projects, we start with what the adopted plans say, and then we look for creative solutions to address the issues at hand. In this case, the housing needs students on campus. This project delivers that in concert with cooperation through, with the University Office of Financial Aid and the City of Madison to deliver not just almost 1,600 beds of student housing, but a significant expansion of the already ongoing OLIV affordable housing program by offering 10% of the beds in the building at a 40% discount. That took a lot of work to get to, and we've appreciated all the partnerships along the way and the conversations with Alder Revere, Alder Govinderhagen, to really create and craft an approach that leverages that parcel, that small corner parcel that many of us go by and not even realize is there, but gives us the opportunity to deliver that affordable housing piece. This creative partnership is going to last for 40 years and deliver some significant discounts for students of need on campus with a very low burden of entry. This year-long dialogue has strengthened the project's design, has identified issues and allowed us opportunities to address them with numerous design changes throughout, which Jeff Zalisko will address. And we're really happy to be here with the support of CANDA, NCNI Neighborhood Steering Committees, city staff, Urban Design Commission, Plan Commission, and Finance Commission. And so, tonight, we're looking forward to an approval that allows us to move forward and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. My guess that Jeff is next?
Yes.
All right, Jeff Zalisko, also Core Spaces.
Could you go to page 14, please? Good evening. My name is Jeff Zalisko. I'm a senior principal with Antunovic Associates. We're architects collaborating with Core Spaces on the Johnson-Broom project. Our team, our development team, has worked with staff, UDC, and the neighborhood group methodically over the last 12 months. During that time, we had regular, regular discussions with staff. We had two informational meetings with UDC, which were very productive in advance of our hearing on December 1st. On December 1st, UDC approved our project unanimously. During that hearing, they praised the project, the design, and they, they really said, they said that they had never participated in a project where it evolved and improved so much during the process, the entitlement process with them. So, we felt that that was very important. I think as, in a large part, due to the design, UDC, or I'm sorry, Plan Commission also designed or approved the project unanimously. So, staff and UDC both supported the idea, our idea, of a design of a collection of buildings, the four buildings that Doug had mentioned earlier. I'm sorry, can you go to page 17 now? Thank you. The refined, elegant building that you see here is the fruit of labor, the fruit of the collective labors of all of us working together to create this project. The input that we received really was, made a huge difference in the final product. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And then Austin Scott Pagnata of Chicago, also representing Core Spaces.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Austin Pagnata. I work on the Core Spaces development team. I've been working on projects in Madison for about five years now, so good to see a lot of you again. I get the pleasure of speaking about affordability, like my colleagues Doug and Brian so elegantly did already, but just want to emphasize a few points. If you could go to slide 20, please. So, what are we actually doing here, right? So, our, our project we did on OLIV that's under construction and that's delivering next year was truly the first project to deliver student affordable housing in the nation. That Madison was able to, the City of Madison was able to accomplish that is a feat of its own. It was the first partnership between a university, a city, and a private developer to do affordable housing for students. We've talked about this a few times, but I think it deserves recognition because of how significant that is for a project to accomplish that. We weren't able to do it on our Johnson and Bassett project, but we have found a way to do it on our Johnson and Broom project, and we have applied the same affordable model that we're doing on, on the OLIV project to the Johnson and Broom project, the one we're speaking about tonight. So, we're really excited about it. Again, 10% of our beds are going to be a 40% discount to market. Our OLIV projects actually under lease-up right now for next year, and almost 100% of those affordable layouts are sold out for next year. We were able to tour that OLIV project with some of the Alders here tonight and the governor and just show how important this project is for Madison and show off kind of the affordable units and show that they're not different from the market rate units. They're exactly the same. So, with that, I'll yield the rest of my time, and there's a few slides in here that detail some of the suite plus unit styles and kind of go into that. So, if we have any questions or we want to go into more detail, we're around and can elaborate on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the registrants wishing to speak on item five, questions for registrants. Alder Harrington McKinney.
The gentleman that just spoke?
Austin?
Austin. You use the term "student affordable housing" several times.
Yep.
All right. I want to make sure that I'm clear about the term "student affordable housing." Say more about that specifically.
Yes. So, the issue with providing student affordable housing is that students don't qualify for natural affordable housing, Lytech, Section 8, all of the traditional programs you would think of when you think of affordable housing. So, students do not qualify for that. They don't qualify because usually they don't have income, so there's no way to qualify if they can be eligible for the traditional affordable unit. The plan that we've come up with, that Madison collectively, everybody in this room has come up with, is that the university, in partnership with Core Spaces, the private developer, will screen tenants who are eligible to qualify for the affordable units. So, it takes out the need for verifying income and puts a third party, separate from the private developer, to qualify tenants. They then send a pre-qualification letter to Core and say, hey, this student needs financial aid, they qualify for this unit, and then they can lease from us. So, it's qualified through the UW-Madison, and then they come to us and we lease them the bed space in the affordable unit.
Of this, the unit at Johnson and Broom, how, how many of those units will be set aside and earmarked for affordable student housing?
We're looking at roughly, it's 10% of the total beds, so it's going to be roughly 162 beds. Yep.
Other questions? Other Knox?
Yeah, stay there. You have that screen you had up?
Yep. It's slide 20, or 21, yeah.
Could I see?
Yep.
So, explain the section about two-plus-two slash suites. Can you explain the composition, because you're saying beds?
Yes.
So, kind of what does that look like in a room or a suite?
Yep, so, yep, perfect. Slide 22. So, when we came up with this program, the first part of the program was surveying students to see which unit they most preferred to have this discount for. So, the students collectively chose the suite plus unit. The suite plus unit is one of our most, fastest leasing units across our portfolio. We offer it across the nation in a market rate style, so not a discount to market. We're offering it as the 40% discount to market because students chose it. We didn't, you know, create it for this program, essentially. So, you'll see, the most unique thing about this floor plan is that it provides a price point that's comparable to a double-up room. And what that means is developers, especially in high-cost, high-rent markets like Madison and like LA and markets similar, they'll put two twin beds in one bedroom, and they'll rent both of those bed spaces out to individual tenants. It has no privacy, there's no divider, it's not a great living condition. Over Core Spaces' history, what we've done is, over the last 10 years, we've been working on a unit that provides privacy, but also a very low price point on a market rate basis. So, across our portfolio, 25% of our beds are already in this floor plan at a market rate style. Now, when you look at our floor plan, you'll see that there's that big white divider system. That's actually a furniture piece in between A1 and A2 that has a sliding door that closes and locks. So, this price point is comparable with a double-up room, but it's, provides that extra layer of privacy that you just wouldn't get in that type of unit. And that's why it's very popular across our portfolio.
So, in this configuration, you have four students in this suite?
Correct. You have four students in the suite, separated by those dividers.
Okay. And they share the common?
Yep, and they'll share that common area, exactly.
Good. Thank you.
And there is, there is a video, I don't know if we could play it here, but it shows like the full furniture system going into the bedroom and dividing it up. It's a, it's a really cool system.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the registrants? Seeing none, thank you. And we'll go on to item 30, which is, again, on the issue of Core Spaces. It's authorizing the inclusion of a land use restriction agreement to the purchase and sale agreement between Core Spaces and the city for 405 West Gorm Street. Wishing to speak is Paul Matthews of Colby Street.
Hi there. I first came interested in this project when I heard about the whole agreement with the 10% beds for 40 under market rate. But it wasn't until I looked into the actual purchasing agreement that I noticed that this 40-year relationship that was spoken of so glowingly has a very easy out, where all they have to do is pay up $8 million, and then they get to do whatever they want with the units. So, doing some napkin math, that brevity I will not go through here, all it would take, I mean, if you do a $500 increase per bed, that's about $300,000 a year, and so that's only 12 years until you hit that $8 million, which would mean they would only have to, they would have to stay in the agreement for 28 years in order for us not to lose on that proposition. I don't say that I can see the future, but I could see a situation where 10 years from now, Core Spaces is not building anything in town, and they have someone up above that says, hey, it would be very, very much in our interest to just pay that $8 million and then get the next 30 years at market rates of whatever that increase is. So, I just, I think we should be pricing this fine, this incentive measure, much higher, and doing some calculations to see what actually be in the interest of keeping this relationship together if we want these affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you. No other registrants wishing to speak on item 30. Are there any questions? Alder Govinderhagen?
Madam Mayor, am I able to ask questions of Core Spaces?
Yes. Brian, Doug, and Austin are all registered on this item.
Thank you. Hi, guys. Quick questions, most of these we've already discussed, but I kind of just want to have it on the council floor, I guess. So, regarding the LORA agreement, the land use restriction agreement, we just kind of heard about the $8 million kind of buyout kind of thing. Can you explain that a little bit, whether that's true, whether it's not? Can you explain that a bit?
Sure. So, there's a couple clauses in that document. I apologize, I don't have the wording right in front of me, but as Alder Govinderhagen mentioned, there are a lot of dialogue about that specific clause. And actually, there's a clause, the sentence right before that clause, that's probably the one that's the most telling, and that is a clause that gives the ability of the city to choose whether they would like to sue for performance or allow the buyout. And before the developer could select the buyout, the city would have to allow them to. And that's an important clause, because that allows the city to say, if there is a default, again, our, our goal is to not have a default, but if there is a default, the city has that choice to say either you have to meet your requirements or you are allowed to buy out. So, the $8 million is there as a buyout clause for financing purposes, but also in the event that unforeseen circumstances happen. The university no longer wants to qualify students or something else happens down the line that we don't know about. I guess I would, I would qualify to say in the most likely time that that could be accessed is probably with only a couple of years left. But that the city has the right to require the Core Spaces team or any subsequent purchaser of the property in the event it's sold. Again, not, not our goal, but this goes with the land. There is a 40-year land use restriction being recorded against the property that would require performance if the city so chooses. And I know you had some questions on that. We appreciated the opportunity to have that clarification and also talk about how that threshold was set for the $8 million. But we do believe that it's a good agreement on behalf of both parties and something that will result in quite a bit of affordable housing for the next 40 years.
Thank you. And if you guys, you kind of mentioned this, but if you do sell, the next management company would still be abided by this agreement, correct?
Correct. The land use restriction is recorded against the property, cannot be extinguished without the express agreement of the, of the city and the eventual owners, so it's a two-party agreement, and as such would run with the land for 40 years.
And then, I know you spoke about this over the summer, but are there any guarantees in place to kind of prevent you guys from selling during this 40-year period? Do you plan on selling?
No, no, we do not plan on selling. There's no restrictions on it, per se, but over the, since 2018, we haven't sold a building. We recap into them, which means we invest more, essentially. But that's how we're set up now, is to hold for the long term.
Right, thank you. And then, one more question, which was sent in by the public, so I feel like I should ask while I'm here. If, if the rezoning amendment for Core Spaces is not voted in favor of, would you guys pull out the project?
Can, you're asking if we would pull out of the project if we were voted down today?
Yes. This is, I'm just reading off the email, so that's the question.
I think we would just have to evaluate where we are after, after the meeting.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions on item 30? Alder Knox?
Is there, did you get to staff questions?
Not yet, Alder. We'll get there. Alder Wahili for registrants?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, if I recall, there was some nuances or complaint about the community engagement the last summer, and I'm wondering how you have able to rectify some of those problems in the community.
Yes, lesson learned. And I would thank both Alder Revere and Alder Govinderhagen in terms of broadening the outreach. We've had several meetings with the steering committee throughout the process to make sure that we were trying to share as much information as possible, including forwarding any and all plans and any and all documents that were associated with the project throughout, with a lot of changes along the way. Along with that, I would like to thank the Campus Area Neighborhood Association and Capital Neighborhoods, Inc. for their assistance in outreach, in sending out a survey throughout their membership to gather feedback, and that was reflected in their letter to the Council and Plan Commission, where it pointed out that they, you know, received quite a bit of feedback about the project throughout the process. And so, you know, in comparison to the Johnson-Bassett project, I think we had a much more robust opportunity for discussion, partially because of time of year, but also because of the efforts of lots of people to try to make sure that, that the information was put out there and gathered appropriately.
This is Doug. I just echo what Brian said as well. I have the slide number nine open in front of me, and I said this at Plan Commission, so I'll say it again here. Since this time last year, we've had roughly two formal meetings per month with city staff, with, with committees at the City of Madison, in addition to four steering committee meetings. So, we've, we've definitely continued to meet along the way, collaborate, coordinate, engage with, with all of the stakeholders in this instance, and that's just the formal meetings. We've had, you know, countless phone calls, countless meetings with staff, council members, other stakeholders in the community, and the steering committee. So, it's, it's been an ongoing process, and we've really enjoyed the engagement throughout.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we'll go on to our last item. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Which is item 39. Again, adopting an amendment to the City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. One registrant wishing to speak, Michael Nicholas Papas of Old Sock Road.
I'd like to review this. I want to stay up. I don't want to.
Okay, thank you.
Then that is it for public comment. And we will go on then to, oh, Alder Figueroa call?
I was wondering if it's okay with the body to take, I only have like one question for the MPD report, if we can take that first so Chief Barnes can go home? If that's okay with everybody or else?
Is there any objection to taking item 40 up first?
Chair?
Yes, Alder Bennett?
Yeah. My deepest apologies. Before we consider that item, I hope that it's okay with the body. As you know, I had questions for registrants on item two. Justice was not, had some issues at the time. So if it's okay, I hope that we can suspend the rules and consider questions for residents or registrants on item two.
All right, we're going to take these in order, if that's okay. Is there any objection to going back to item two for questions for registrants? Seeing no objection in the room. Alder Bennett, questions for Justice Castaneda on item two?
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. So I really appreciate your time, Justice. And I hope that, I'd love to hear your thoughts on the, on the height map amendments between four and six and 10 stories. So as someone who's an expert in affordable development, how would a, an increase in the allowance of height in stories from four to 10 impact your ability to be, to deliver a design that maximizes both units and affordability?
Thank you and a good evening. I, I think I answered a lot of this in the other question. It's not the same, obviously, but a lot of it applies. I guess the main thing, and this is not, in very simple terms, the two main things that affect the capacity or ability to create affordability are acquisition costs and density or the number of units you can put on a site. And so by really, and I guess the location here in terms of where it is and what it's, you know, in terms of centrality and just the, the general geography of the site. I think there's so much to be said about why it's important to maximize density when you can. It doesn't mean that this is, you know, doing that everywhere is always the right answer. But I think if you just look at where this is, there's a lot of good arguments, many of which have been talked about and discussed. And I'm sure you guys are going to talk about and discuss at length in just a few minutes here about why this is an opportune site to do that and why we should do that. Just kind of listening to the folks who just got done talking, I think continuing to be very creative with the way that we approach affordability through relationships with other institutions, organizations, service providers and advocacy groups. I think there's a lot of opportunity here. And I don't, you know, especially for this site, I think it's really important that we maximize that. Alder Grant, did I answer your question?
Yeah, that was great. I really appreciate that. So I know that in your, just now, you just mentioned acquisition costs. And I've heard some concerns from residents that, from some other developers that we heard from that increasing heights or in the story limit may result in a quote-unquote bidding war, which would somehow allow for not, would discourage affordability. Could you help us understand how an RFP that very clearly states measures of affordability would abate such a situation of a bidding war and ensure that affordability is included in the design?
Well, well, you know, just, it's hard to, I mean, this is the thing, right? There's, here's, therein lies the rub. I think that you, you know, the city, when you guys have leverage and when you have control of the site, you have, excuse me, when you have control of the site, you have much more leverage or you have considerable leverage in terms of dictating the specifics of an RFP than you would if it was just a public, privately owned site. All that to say, you know, you can't, I mean, at the end of the day, I would be remiss if I did not just kind of reiterate something that I've kind of said in different forms, that just by increasing density does not necessarily mean it's going to be more affordable. There's a lot of things that have to be done to ensure that. And I, as you pointed out, the fact that you guys are, or the city is, owns the property, you guys have considerable leverage here in terms of dictating those things. And I think that, as is the case with some of the other projects, I think the direction you guys are going with 1202 Park Street, I really think is a good example of this. But there's a lot of things that you guys are going to be able to determine and be able to kind of lay out in terms of how people are going to approach a project. And I think you guys have that control and purview here. Did I answer your question there?
Yes, you did, thank you. And I just have one more question for you. That is, I know that with an amendment like this, where, where, where there's a desire to maximize opportunity in this design, there is still concerns that 10 stories built up to the lot line would be very jarring to residents and pedestrians alike. Could you speak to different design guidelines that developers can and do use to respect a pedestrian feel of developments that include density?
I mean, there's so many. I think jarring is always in the eye of the beholder. And jarring, it's an empty lot right now. So anything there is going to look significantly substantially different than it does right now. I think the, being able to provide some definition to jarring and not take, you know, I guess there, there are so many. And I think so many of the developers and so many of the, the folks that are involved with not just development, but also site design and just kind of neighborhood aesthetics have access and have utilized these across the city in different projects. So, you know, you know, it's hard to, to speak to what jarring means because it's not really a universally understood or agreed upon concept. If that answers your question.
Yeah, that's fair. I guess it's hard when we use blanket terms like jarring. I guess there's a concern about how the difference between four or six stories and 10 stories and how that might impact residents. But anyways, I will leave it there. I thank you. I thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Thank you, Justice. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So then, we'll move on to the request to take up item 40 out of order. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, then we'll go to item 40. President Curry, a motion, please?
Move to accept.
Moved and seconded to accept the report in item 40. Questions, Alder Figueroa call?
Yes. So this summer, MPD took an approach with a new strategy called stratified policing. And I couldn't help it but to notice significant impact on significant changes on numbers across this report, this quarter report. So I wanted to know if Chief Barnes can share with us if the strategy in policing tools that were used across the districts this year had any impact on these numbers?
Thank you for the, the question and thank you for the opportunity to speak a little early. There are a number of things that I think went into the reductions that we have seen. One, stratified policing is our business model, if you will. And I don't think the department has had a crime reduction strategy in a very long time. This strategy is, is really, I think it's evidence-based, number one, empirically based. But it asks the department to do basically three things. One, to analyze crime quickly. If you, if you allow me to give you an analogy, most of us will go to the doctor once a year to make sure that we're healthy. Crime analysis, it's like a health checkup every day. Every day they come in and they look for patterns and problems to, to early identify so that our officers can address those in the right way. The second thing it asks us to do after we analyze problems is to work together in problem solving. And what that looks like is each captain is tasked with solving problems in what we call our priority areas with the community and with other, other departments. I can think of departments from public health to transportation, to sanitation, to parks and recreation. That is just a small sample of examples where the, the captains are working with these particular groups. In addition to that, community engagement is a very big part of the problem solving process. The third thing that the strategy asks us to do is to be accountable, to be accountable to each other. And what that means is the captains have to ensure that the officers has the tool, have the tool, training, and time to actually get the job done. And I believe that they're doing that. We have a meeting once a month where we talk about our strategies. It's not a meeting where we measure arrests. It's not a meeting where we measure calls for service. It's not anything like that. It's a meeting where we get together and we talk about who's the best person to solve this problem. It's a meeting where they demonstrate who they work with to solve problems, areas for improvement. And it's really about the inputs, if you will. When it comes to the numbers, that's something that me and the senior command staff works on. But we certainly look at what we call the dosages that the officers are putting in those particular areas. And we know from research that we do not have to go to an entire area and spend our, our day there. That looks like overpolicing. It looks like, it looks like we're being burdensome on our community. That's not what we want. What we ask the officers to do is to go to our priority areas and other identified areas by our analysts for about 10 to 15 minutes every hour and do something proactive, whether it's foot patrol, whether it's engaging the community, whether it's traffic patrol, if that's the, the complaint. We do get quite a few complaints regarding traffic. And then we measure that. And that's what the analysts do every day to determine if we need to move the doses to another time or place or if it's another thing that's causing the criminality. But the, the key is we're working together in a way that, quite frankly, the department has not been working together with other people in the past. And, and we're very proud of that. They're doing a great job working with some of the apartment complexes, whether it's Tree Lane or Harmony, Operation Fresh Start. The officers were out two days ago, I believe, packaging meals and working with our local partners and nonprofits in the community. And I really believe that it's making a difference.
Thank you. So one of the things that you mentioned there was analyzing crime quickly. And just, I can see that how it helps you to get ahead of the curve. As we all know, in the past few months, we have a high, the communities experiencing high stress over international crisis that impacts many people here. How, what can you tell the community about how MPD is working on ensuring that everyone in Madison is safe and feels safe within the community?
Yeah, I think that really begins with the amount of, of intelligence that we get and how we analyze that. We get a lot of information from our community, which is why I've always preached community engagement and working with the community because they are your first identifiers, your eyes and ears. And, and they do call when they see things. We're also working heavily with our federal partners. They really have a robust network of information and they're doing everything in their power to give us information when, when there is something that's going to occur. But for the community, I want to be, be very clear on this. I, first of all, want to commend the council for, for really, you know, stepping up and, and saying something about where we are now in this country. And regardless of the issue, everyone who comes to Madison deserves to feel safe. And I do commend the, the council. I commend the mayor for, for, for standing up for what's right and, and saying that. And, and we stand behind, behind you all on that. Let me say that in, in Wisconsin, we do not have a hate crime statute, okay? So what we do have is what we call enhancer. Common terms, it's called a mitigating, excuse me, not mitigating, aggravating factors is what it's most commonly known. And so if the crime is assault, if the crime is vandalism and it is motivated by hate against someone's ethnicity, their religion, there's a list of things that you can find in the statute, we have the ability to enhance that and then bump it up to a higher level. And I do believe that our district attorney shares my, my feelings that if we have that, he's going to charge that. Of course, we can only recommend, but I cannot see a situation where he would not charge that. And so I want to be clear that if there is an incident where someone believes that it's a hate crime motivated, we will investigate that like we do all other crimes. However, we will also be investigating it to determine if it meets that enhancer. If it does meet that enhancer,[1572.28] If it does meet that enhancer, I can assure you that our detectives, our officers, and our supervisors will ensure that when we go to the district attorney, that he knows that it is an enhancer and that crime will be elevated in a court of law.
Thank you. Those were my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterver, questions?
Yes. Chief Barnes, you have some data in here on the restorative justice program for 17 to 25-year-olds. It is, however, a process measure, and I'm looking for outcome measures. Excuse me, it's not just 17, 12 to 25-year-olds, excuse me. So when I say outcome measures, I want to know how many of the youth who are referred to this program wind up experiencing recidivism? Recidivism. How many of the youth wind up, if they're in high school, how many of them graduate from high school? How many of them go on to be arrested for other crimes? How many of them get employment? Those kinds of things. Those are the key outcome measures we would want to see from a program like this. And just wondering if you can comment on that.
I can. You know, I think that that should be measured with public health and not with the police because oftentimes when people leave the system, they really don't want to reengage with us. And some of that information would be voluntarily gained. But I have been conducting my own independent studies, since you brought it up, of recidivism. And we're seeing some numbers that are not good. We're seeing people who go through the program or who are in one day and they're out the next. I had a special meeting actually last week where detectives came in and gave me two case studies, very similar of individuals that we've been dealing with since they were 11 years old, 12 years old. They came to our fair city after being involved in other criminality, and it just is not working. Let me rephrase that. I'm not saying procedural justice is not working, but somewhere there's a breakdown when you see mug shots of children and you see their matriculation into adolescence. We have to do a better job. Some of the information, quite frankly, we can't get. We often lose juveniles in the system and we try to figure out where they are. Are they in JRC? Are they somewhere else? Are they at Lincoln Hills? And no one knows where they are because their data keeping efforts are not as robust as we would like them to be. I do agree with you. I think that is a worthy undertaking. I'm not so sure we would get the cooperation, the voluntary cooperation that we would need in order to do that analysis. However, I'm certainly willing to take that on.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you. Chief Barnes, thank you for being here. A couple of quick questions. At the start of this report, there's a couple data points on the fentanyl and heroin overdoses. There was a massive increase this year compared to previous years. And I'm curious, I guess, one, do you know what might be causing this this year specifically out of previous years? And then do you know the demographics potentially? And can you share that? Usually these things are in younger people. I'm concerned if it's like high schoolers, is it college students? Like, I'm curious a little bit about that.
Yeah, I don't think we'll ever know the number, an accurate number of the number of overdoses. But if you look at, I believe you're on page two, you'll see the overdoses and then the overdose deaths. So the overdose deaths have decreased, which is what we want. But I'm not so, believe it or not, worried about the overdoses. We want people to call 911 when someone is experiencing an overdose. I think part of the problem, what we're seeing with the deaths, is that people were afraid to call 911 because they were afraid to get in trouble. Here, that tells me that people are seeing folks go into cardiac arrest or whatever you may call it, and they're calling. And we're getting there in time in order to deliver Narcan or EMS or fire is doing. And they do actually a really great job of that. You know, I talked about this today in a meeting. We are, we're doing a tremendous amount of drug narcotics work. We're seeing fentanyl everywhere. It's in absolutely everything. And it probably will not be long before we see it in cannabis. But we're certainly worried about that. I think when it comes to drugs, we have to look at it from two standpoints. We got to look at it from the supply side and the demand side. I think we need more education around the issue. I think we need more efforts in getting people off the substances. As you know, we have a program that we run in the police department called MARI, the Madison Area Recovery Initiative. And in that, if you are arrested and your criminality is related to drug use, you have the opportunity to go through a drug treatment plan. And based on your success in that or your willingness to go through that, your charges will be dropped. I know that the district attorney is running their own program as well. And so the problem is if you're not involved in criminality, you know, we can't get you into the program. And so we need, you know, every community member, every family member, every loved one who knows someone who may be struggling to encourage them to go to treatment. I don't think we talk about it enough. I think it's kind of taboo. I think we all know, or maybe have known someone that we may have suspected. And it doesn't look like, you know, it looked in the 80s or 90s. These are people that we see every single day. And I think we all have a responsibility to ensure that they get treatment if they're ready for it.
Thank you. And then do you know more specific, are you able to share the demographics of where we see this more often?
Where or, well, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can certainly get our task force officers to print you a map if you're looking at where, if that's what you're saying.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, you use the term dosage quite a bit and it's in the report. Could you say more about dosage, how that term applies to the overall work that you're doing?
Yeah, so when it comes to dosage, we use that word in evidence-based policing, and it's defined as the amount of time you spend in an area to get some kind of efficacy. And so police have always been okay with dosage, but how much it looks like overpolicing, it does more harm than good. And too little, the problem doesn't go away. And so because we're supposed to be experts at it, we monitor that. And that's what we use our crime analysis section to do. I also want to note that for the first time in the history of our department, we actually have restructured our crime analysis unit, and we have a crime analysis supervisor. And we were able to do that through the generosity of the common council, the generosity of the mayor, in order to get a position upgraded. So we have someone who's excellent. His name is Dan Hauder. He works internally, and he's now supervising and organizing that group so that we can measure the correct dosage. Because again, the idea is not to overpolice, and we only have so many resources anyway, but to make sure we're at the right place at the right time. So again, our analysts, every day, they come in and they look for what we call thresholds. And our thresholds are four crimes occurring within a half a mile radius within 10 days. And so usually the captains are on it. When they see that second car stolen, then they're moving resources into the area and ensuring that we can cool the area down and perhaps prohibit someone or discourage, if you will, someone from criminality.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Thank you, chief. I have a question, but before I get to the question, I just wanted to make a comment. I just wanted to let you know, I really see the difference in your stratified policing. I'll give a small example is Penn Park is one example of that. A year ago, I was, me and the residents were quite frustrated with some of the situations there with the growing, a growing population, I think a homeless population that was being preyed upon by negative elements of our community. And I reached out to you, sorry, on a Sunday, you know, to share my frustration with what was going on there, particularly because, you know, I manage a youth program of 130 young people and their parents, and they were all feeling quite stressed with, you know, coming to the park to enjoy some of the things that they should be enjoying. But since you, I know this year implemented that program, I saw really almost 100% change in those kind of negative activity going on in the park. People seem to be enjoying the park a lot more. And so I just want to commend you. I have a meeting every two weeks with the South District Captain. We talk about some of those things. And so I just wanted to commend you on that strategy because it's made a big difference, not only at Penn, but in the district as well. But my question, if you recall, your first quarter report, we talked, you gave us the statistics about the number of arrests. And then even in this third quarter, for African-Americans, it's 45%. I'm guessing, I should know this, but we got to be, what are we, 6% of the city's population, I'm guessing? Something like that?
Correct.
So, and you mentioned at that time that you gauged that probably 50% of those arrests had to do with AODA issues while driving. So one of my questions gets to violence prevention. And I think the city, as well as the county, has poured quite a lot of resources into violence prevention. It seems like, in my opinion, we're chasing the tail on that. You know, people responding to incidents after they occur, and that's important for the victims and the people involved. But I really think we need to try to start focusing more on the front end of the problem. What are the causes and things like that? So my question is, and you can just kind of elaborate on how you feel this might be important, but I've talked to public health about the need for more community-based, culturally-based AODA and mental health services. And when I say services, I mean where people can be in therapy groups, they can be referred to individual therapy, but it has to be culturally competent services where it can be more effective. And you mentioned, just when you were just speaking, about education. And I'll segue to another area. I don't consider it mental health. I just think it's like behavioral health. How do we get to communities, get to individuals, and try to educate them on positive protective lifestyles? So can you comment a little bit on how that might be effective in making your responsibilities easier?
Yeah, it's a very good question. And I know the mayor's like, I know there's a question in there somewhere because I heard you say that before. You know, when it comes to underlying, first of all, I commend, number one, this city, and I really mean that, for actually having the conversation about underlining causes of criminality. It's like a breath of fresh air from someone who's studied this for a very long time. Yes, police respond to symptoms. We don't really respond to the actual problem. And I do think that there needs to be a more robust discussion about what's causing, you know, some of the criminality that we're seeing. I commissioned some study, if you will, case study with our detectives. And, you know, we definitely identified two groups who have really no structure, but for some reason have issues with each other, which leads to violence. You know, angry people with weapons equal violence. One thing that we do know from the research that is, the biggest predictor of violence is a preceding case of violence, which is why when we respond to a shots fired call, we almost treat that as if it was a homicide. We're trying, even though there's no victim, we can't find anything or anyone, we take those shell casings, we analyze those shell casings, and we try to connect the dots. And we have been very successful in doing that. Over the last couple of weeks, we probably have recovered at least 10 firearms, probably all of which from people who haven't reached their 20th birthday. And so we do have an issue with access to guns. We have an issue with gun control, and we need better legislation. We have an issue with assault weapons in this country. And we all have to ask ourselves, is it worth having the conversation, the tough conversations, and making sure that we have the appropriate policies and procedures and laws in order to keep guns out of the hands of children who, quite frankly, have not developed in their mindset to use it appropriately?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro, call additional questions?
I don't have a question, I just a comment.
Okay. I have no other Alders in the queue for questions. Then the motion is to accept the report discussion. Alder Figaro, call?
Yes, I just want to echo District Knox's comments on regards to the impact of this, I have to read that word, sorry.
Stratified.
Stratified, thank you, thank you. Stratified policing efforts and listening that this is something where we are moving that as a daily, daily processes. I so much appreciate that. I would say that, you know, this came to me over the summer. Everyone was very busy, so it took a little bit of coordinating. So it would be nice to have this like as a project with enough time for us to really get in there to support the efforts. In my district specifically, I had a couple of nonprofit organizations that helped me deliver flyers that really got engaged with the district to support the area specifically because they're already working with the area. So it wasn't, what I appreciated the most is that it wasn't a police thing. It really looked for to engage the organizations that know the people there and the people trust them in order to actually bring you in and make things, you know, get the work better. So I'm glad to hear that this is an all-year thing. But again, if we're going to be focusing, if we already have an idea that next year we're going to be focusing on area A or B, the planning to start a little bit earlier so we can then get more people and the violence prevention team also included, that would be my only ask. But thank you, thank you for the time tonight. I really wanted to highlight that programming and the safety issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is to accept the report. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the report is accepted. Thank you, chief. Alder Vitterver?
We have a 10-minute recess, please.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded for a 10-minute recess. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're in recess. We'll be back at 8:42. Have the Alders on Zoom come back to camera. And the Alders in the room take their seats again. And the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Slack. Alder Slack is present. Alder Tischler.
Here.
Alder Tischler is present. Alder Revere.
Here.
Alder Revere is present. Alder Bitiver.
Here.
Alder Bitiver is present. Alder Wohelia.
Present.
Alder Wohelia is present. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin.
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. Alder Curry. Curry is present. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is present. Alder Govindarajan. Alder Govindarajan is present. Alder Harrington McKenney. Harrington McKenney is present. Alder Knox. Alder Knox is present. Aldo Latimer Verris is excused. Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Aldo Martinez Rutherford. Aldo Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldo Miazze. Aldo Miazze is present. Aldo Rommel.
Present.
Aldo Rommel is present. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we are back then to item two. Item two is Legisstar 80307 amending the map in sections of the Madison General Ordinance is related to downtown height limits for the Brayton Lot area in District Six. On item two, President Curry, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item two. Are there questions? Alder Rommel.
Mayor, I'd like to move the amendment that I sent to everyone. It's in Legisstar, but I emailed it.
Alder Rommel will move the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Alder, for the sake of the public, do you want to say briefly what it is?
Thank you, Mayor.
And speak to it.
I would move a zoning map amendment to down, related to downtown height limits of the Madison General Ordinance to update the height map to allow six stories or 88 feet in the portion that is currently four stories.
Thank you. So then let's see if there are questions. Alder Evers, questions?
For staff?
For staff?
Yeah, this would be for Heather. Regarding this amendment on the six stories versus 10 stories, given the percentage of the overall Brayton Lot that's that is currently at four and the other that is 10, what are we talking about in terms of the number of? I guess what I'm trying to understand is what are the number of units that we're talking about that would be reduced from 10 stories all the way across the board to six stories in this one particular section that's outlined in the staff report? Does that make sense?
Yeah, the question does make sense, Alder. I, you know, we're not, we're so early in this. We don't have a design as of yet. But let me provide an estimate. I think, you know, let's say that that bank along East Main Street has 10 units per floor. So maybe it would be approximately 40 units less. I think that that depth is about one unit of depth. So let's say going from 10 to six would be about 40 units less. That's a rough estimate with no design to really lean on for that. But that's my best estimate in the moment.
I appreciate that. I have one more question on a slightly different topic. We've heard the argument from staff that a construction style, the stick style of construction, which is possible up to something like five stories, generally speaking, perhaps it could go to six, but generally is in the four to five, has a lower cost, overall cost, compared to if you were building something the same height with concrete. How does that change, say, if? So that makes sense, right? Because it's more expensive. But isn't it possible that there is a sticking point somewhere so that a 10 story project built out of concrete actually has lower per unit costs than a five story building built out of wood? Isn't that possible?
You know, I do understand that question, too. That's a great question. I think still the per unit, since this is a, it's a difference in the cost of the materials, right? And the size of a unit. Let's say each unit takes the same amount of concrete and steel to really produce it. And that concrete and steel has the same incremental, you know, it's incrementally more expensive than the wood that it would take to fit out one unit. So I don't know where that threshold is met. I absolutely see what you're asking. But I think, you know, by and large, the per unit cost is always going to be more, more expensive with concrete and steel versus, versus wood. And I will say that my colleague, Matt Walker, is here on the Zoom as well and might have more to, more to offer. And I would defer to him on that, too.
Well, then, a follow up. Do economies of scale play a role? Is there a certain point where the height of the building makes up the addition, for the additional cost of the construction materials necessary to build that height?
Director Walker?
Yes, I think, I think we're, what we hear from developers is when you get, you know, past 10 stories, that additional floor, you don't have to invest another dollar in land, say, or, you know, you already got your parking built. So that's where you're really getting those efficiencies, is that you're getting more for what you paid, more, more housing on what you paid for for land is really the efficiency you're gaining.
But you're saying the cutoff is at 10 stories? Do we know that definitively? Or could it be at eight stories? Or do we know where that, that sticking point is?
No, that's a good, that's a good point. I think what happens is we see people build a lot of, you know, four and five story buildings. But when you start to get much above that, you're flipping into the steel and concrete. And we don't see a lot of seven, eight, nine story buildings. You start to see people building at 10, 12, you know, that kind of range. So there, there's some efficiency in there. I'm sure it's specific site to site. But I don't think there is a magical, you know, like 11 stories is the sweet spot. I think it is going to be very specific to the site.
One last question, if I may. Are there clear cost distinctions from insurance? I've understood that insurance costs for wood construction have skyrocketed recently. Is that a factor in today's development climate?
I know that our insurance costs have gone up as the CBA, but I don't know the difference between our high rise versus mid rise off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Questions for staff? Alder Figaro Cole?
Either one of you can answer this. Can you please explain to the public what does it mean to have control over a RFP, in this case, for example?
Director Walker?
How much power does that, does the city gain by being in control of an RFP?
Sure. So in the RFP, you, as the council, get to put out sort of what, what you want. And that's, you put, you can put in a minimum acceptable that you're going to say you will not accept proposals that don't have X amount of affordability or X amount of units or any of that. So you can set that, that floor on things. And then developers submit what they, they think they can do on it. And you then can choose how you want to score that. Maybe you're going to put more weight on projects that pay the city a lot of money. Maybe put more weight on projects that deliver deeper affordability. Maybe you give more weight to projects that are doing something innovative in design or sustainability. So you set that weight. And then a team emerges at the top and you get to choose. Maybe you don't want to work with any of these developers and you'll start over. We've started over on these RFPs for multiple projects multiple times because we just couldn't get the project that the council won at the end of the day. And even once you select a team, there's usually a whole process where staff are negotiating a development agreement where maybe they originally thought that they could do, you know, 50% affordable, but council wants to see, can you, can you push that higher? Can you get it to 60% affordable? So we would negotiate and work that deal. Council still has another choice to approve whether or not they want to do it. And then we end up signing a series of usually development agreements that bind the developer to, to do that thing. And then they're sort of, they're signing a land use restriction or some other thing that's going to lock them into developing what they said they were going to develop. So all throughout the process, the council has the ability to say, no, this isn't the project that, that we wanted or this isn't the project that we signed up for. Unlike if it's just a regular market rate, market development where there your controls are usually through how much subsidy they want or through the regular land use approval process. So you have much more control in the RFP.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wohelia, questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So we have heard about the affordability for, for this project. And, you know, so I'm wondering what's the distinction between the 10 story versus the six or four story in term of the affordability or the market rate?
Sure. So I guess there's, you know, there's been a couple of things brought up that this project going from four to 10, it just delivers more units. And when we have a housing shortage, I think the argument is that more units in such a high amenity, great location is, is a good thing on its own. Then there's, then discussion about the depth of affordability you can get in a four story building versus six versus 10. And that kind of comes down to the subs, a lot of it comes down to the subsidies and how they work. So typically, when you are seeing affordable housing developments come through, they're using Section 42 tax credits. And the, the 9% tax credit is sort of the most powerful of those. And the thing about the 9% tax credit is that it's a, it's a finite resource. So when the state of Wisconsin issues them, they, they do things that encourage you to, to sort of put a cap on how much subsidy you're putting in per unit. But it also puts a cap on the amount of subsidy that can go into any one project. So typically what we see with 9% tax credit deals is they're, you know, 50 to 80 units because you max out the amount of credit you can get in it. And so that's why every 9% deal that we've seen in the last decade tend, are in these four and five story buildings because they're 50 to 80 units. Because that 9% tax credit's a finite resource, the state created their own 4% tax credit that can be added to the federal 4% tax credit. So four plus four is eight. So it's not quite as good as the 9% tax credit, but it's pretty good. It can still deliver some 30%, 50% area median income units. And that, those projects we've been seeing come in lately, they can get a bit bigger. They can be over 100 units. They can, a, a project that you've seen is the St. John's Development, which is very close to the Brayton Lot. So it's 130 units using the four plus four tax credit. And it does get down to some of those lower income levels. But it, it maxes out as well. You run out of credit. You can't do a 200 unit building with that program. So if you want to get into really big buildings, So if you want to get into really big buildings, into things that are, you know, 150, 300-unit buildings, like what you saw at Hartmeier and like what you saw at the at the the Bimbo Bakery property, those just use the 4% federal tax credit. Those projects can get really big, but they, because it's only a 4% tax credit, it's not the four plus four or the nine. It has a very hard time getting very low-income units. So like at Hartmeier, you're not seeing 30% AMI units in there. At at the Bimbo Bakery, you did because the city put an extra subsidy to to get that project to get lower income units, to get more 50s, more 40s, more 30s, than the tax credit could sort of naturally do. So each of these programs sort of targets a different size building, but also a different level of affordability. So when we're saying a four-story building, we're saying, but I think people are really saying is that's probably a 9% tax credit deal. So it's less units, but it can get a little bit more affordability. If you went up to 10 stories, that 9% tax credit probably won't work. So we'd be looking at a four plus four or maybe a straight 4% tax credit deal. So you get more units, but they might not be quite as low income without the city stretching on how much we subsidize the project. I know that's a lot of numbers. So if you need me to clarify, I can certainly add more detail.
Thank you. Let's see. Alder Rumel is next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, Director Walker. That was very, very, you know, informative and all-encompassing. Could you help fill out some of the gaps? You know, based on what we heard in public testimony, there was some concern that some of these, like the 9% credit, might just be segregating very low income. Does WEDA require a range of affordability in all their projects? Or what's kind of, what what else goes with these size and differential levels of affordability?
Sure. So for the competitive 9% and then the competitive state 4% tax credit, there there's a point maximizing formula to be competitive in these that pushes you to have a wide variety of incomes within that building. So it's going to have some at 30% AMI, 50, 60, and even market rate in there. And that's why you'll see when the projects that come through the Affordable Housing Fund are all mixed income, they, unless they're senior, they have a mix of unit sizes. Because again, we're just pushing you to diversify what's happening within that building. The federal 4% is, because it's not competitive, it doesn't have quite as many things. So you you see it's a lot of 60% AMI units. They sort of, that's you're averaging around 60%. You might get some that are, you know, 80% and some that might get down to 40%. But really, it's a lot of 60% AMI, which would, you know, we'd consider it to be still affordable, but it's more in that workforce area of the of the spectrum.
Thank you. I have one additional question on a different track. You know, we, there's $9 million attached to this site. And in other examples that I, at least I, in my experience, like, for example, Union Corners, we were able to sell that parcel for a dollar, you know, in part of our TIF planning. This is not an option for this site. So how does the $9 million that we owe to the FT, well, we owed a Metro to help leverage that award to the BRT? Can you explain that?
Sure. So as part of the BRT program, we sort of federalized the site. We contributed this site to BRT as part of our local match to be the staging for construction. And so the FTA counted the value of that land as part of our local match. So we didn't have to put up cash. But we did have to sign some commitments that said, at the end of the day, the site is going to be redeveloped in a transit supportive way and that we have to sell the site for the that that value, the $9 million. And that that has to then go to support transit operations. So it could be that you sell it for that price or you land lease it in a series of lease payments that add up to that amount. So we can't just sell it for a dollar. We have that floor of a price. You can sell it for more. So if the market supports, someone's willing to offer $15 million or whatever it is, you could take that. But the $9 million is kind of the the minimum that has to be collected to then go to subsidize those transit operations.
Thank you. One more question. So, you know, we've heard about, well, the core spaces, you know, use the bonus floor ordinance. And that is also operational on this site. But I was trying to think, how does that work with stick build? Like, at some point, you could get more floors by the ordinance, but you couldn't necessarily add. What's the line for wood where you couldn't like add another floor in in the spirit of that ordinance? Have you thought about that question before?
I'll admit, I'm not an engineer.
You know, so you could do four stories and then add another floor, and that would be five stories. But, you know, what I understand from developers is that you can only build five, five stories in wood before it becomes, you know, you have to change methods. So I just occurred to me that at five stories, could you add that extra floor as part of the ordinance?
Yeah, so we've, five is really kind of where the market is sort of optimized, I think, on on that stick frame. We do have, do see parts that have, the buildings that do go up to six utilizing stick frame, or they do a portion of the building at six. But that's not very common, I don't think. I don't know if Director Stoudt has something to add on that constructibility side.
Sure, sure. So I think that six-story buildings are possible, but they would be two floors of concrete with four floors of of stick build or wood construction over them. And so I I think really the, like Director Walker mentioned, what we see is a lot of four- and five-story buildings. Even the five-story building, I believe, has to have a concrete first floor. So often, when you see a commercial space on the first floor, that's built out with concrete with four floors of of wood frame construction above. So that, you know, and I and I do want to clarify that even the way the ordinance is written right now, with that four-story height limit along East Main Street, given the new downtown affordable housing ordinance, a developer, including if it were the city or the CDA, could construct a five-story building along East Main Street with with affordable housing within it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alder Bennett, does that answer your questions? Or did you have others?
Oh, my gosh. Sorry. Um, my, I'm at, I'm with family, so isn't that a joy? Now, I I have additional questions. Some of, many of them were answered. Would one of you be able to pull up the height map, please?
Heather's working on it.
Lovely. Thank you so much. I hope everyone is able to see this. Could you, one of you explain to me the thought process behind the zigzag of like the four stories there? It seems a bit arbitrary.
Yeah, Alder, this did come up at Plan Commission, and I did not have a great answer for that. But I can tell you that by and large, when the height map was created, it followed old parcel lines, so original plat parcel lines that had been there before. And that was my best guess as to why there's the jog in the block between the 10 and the 4. Another reason that I offered Plan Commissioners as a possibility is that there was a desire to maintain some, you know, a height limit of four stories for a length of Hancock Street, you know, a deeper length along Hancock Street adjacent to the First Settlement Historic District. But as I said at Plan Commission, I, you know, we don't know exactly why that jog is is there.
Right, right. That makes sense. Thank you. And so I just wanted to dig a little bit into some of the surrounding area and developments that have used WEDA tax credits. It is, or it is my understanding that directly across the street at the St. John's Development, they, it is a four plus four tax credit building with 130 units, 60% of those units, or about 78 units, being between the 30 to 50% AMI range. Do you, would that sound, does that sound right to you? Or if not, does it sound right that four plus four tax credit development could deliver units within the 30 to 50% AMI range at that level?
I think that's probably a question for you, Matt. We may have lost Director Walker, not sure.
Yep, looks like we lost Matt.
I keep losing people that I hope to answer my questions.
Don't take it personally, Alder.
Oh, I don't know. It's okay.
Well, why don't we hold on that and see if we can get Matt back? Did you have additional questions?
I think my other question may have been a Heather, or not Heather, a Matt question as well. But just, I I just want to like clarify for, oh, Matt might be back. Yay.
I think the answer is yes. You cut out my my Zoom question.
So and just to clarify, 60% of like, 60% of the units in St. John's are between 30 to 50% AMI, which is about like 70 to 80 units. Is that, that's possible in a four plus four, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And the four plus four gets close to the 9%. And then sometime, and then through the city subsidy, we can push it to make sure we're getting what we want to see in the 30 to 50% AMI range. So it's close to 9%. It's just not exactly the same.
Sure, sure. And then let's compare that to the 9%. Could you tell me what's the quote-unquote sweet spot of affordable units that are allowed or, you know, in general, allowed in a 9% credit building?
Sure. So we typically see, you know, about 20% of units around 30% AMI, 15 to 20% up at, you know, 80 or market rate, with the rest being in 50 to 60. And the city staff negotiate, you know, is it that we want to see? You know, sometimes we want to see more three bedrooms so we don't get quite as many of the very low income. But the, you know, it's it's close, where more than half the units are in the 50 to 60 range. It's a little bit different in each project. It's a little bit different if it's senior versus family, where we push and pull those levers. But yeah, it it looks like what you described with them, with a lot of 30s and 50s is what we end up pushing for.
Right, right, right. And I just want to like clarify that, like, when we look side by side with what can be done with a 9% and what you just said, like, could be done with a four plus four. So essentially, depending on how we write things, the same amount of 30 and 50% AMI units could be delivered, with the exception that's like, of course, with a four plus four, additional units beyond what the 30 to 50% AMI range would be delivered.
Yeah, so yeah, so we, right, we get them in the ballpark of each other. St. John's is a good example of of that. I will say the one thing about St. John's that's a little bit different is because the church contributed the land for free, they could sort of started at an advantage because the developer didn't have to go purchase a site. But yes, like, we, about half of the projects that we funded through the Affordable Housing Fund are four plus fours. And you'd have to look pretty closely to see where they're different in their mix from the 9% tax credit. They they're in the general ballpark of each other.
Right, definitely. And then I have a couple more questions. I think that I asked Justice, but just to like reiterate from a staff perspective, I know that there's concerns about the land costs and, you know, about starting a quote-unquote bidding war. Could you explain to us how restricting affordability to a certain amount in the RFP would discourage something of that nature, like a bidding war that would discourage affordability?
Yes. So if if we put in a lot of affordability requirements, I think it's highly likely that most of the RFP respondents would sort of, if we put a floor of $9 million, you know, any extra dollar that they would be paying us in land, they'd be asking for in subsidy from the Affordable Housing Fund or or TIF. Because if you have a lot of affordability, they're they're going to be constrained in in that way. On on the flip side, if you didn't have a lot of affordability requirements and they could make it work, paying, what we'll call it, $15 million, you could also choose to use that $15 million to buy more affordability in the building. So this is what we did with the Novo Building at Judge Doyle Square, is that the city, it doesn't, it didn't use tax credits. We just subsidized individual units to bring the rents down. So so more money coming in, you could choose to do things like that if if you wanted to. Or if the city, say, didn't have any affordability requirements and you sold it just at market rate maximum value, you could choose to take the proceeds of that and put that money into the Affordable Housing Fund to spend on affordability, affordable housing some somewhere else. But yes, to go back to your original question, the more you restrict what can happen on the site with affordability, the less that the market's going to be able to pay you.
Sure, sure. Great. Thank you. And then lastly, I know I used the word drawing with Justice, but just to clarify, should we allow 10 stories? That doesn't mean the entire site will be 10 stories, right? Like, there are tools such as different setbacks and develop, design, development, design measures that would ensure that, you know, we can maintain a neighborhood feel without losing too much of the affordable units that would be provided, right?
I'm going to let Director Stoudt answer that. I'm I'm going to answer finance questions and she can reply any questions.
Sure. Thanks for that question, Alder. So so since the city owns this site, we can ask for whatever we want if we go the request for proposals route or if we develop it ourselves through our Community Development Authority. If this were a privately-owned site, then we'd have, you know, and we were making this same height change to the zoning map, then we would be relinquishing a lot. You know, in the downtown area, we have a variety of zoning tools. One is a height maximum. Others are setbacks and step backs, like you mentioned. You know, we we would be, as a city, we would be choosing to provide ourselves a lot of flexibility on this site. But I I think your question is, could we then require through the request for proposals process or require of ourselves, you know, design elements that would reduce the impacts of of that height? We certainly can require that. It's just, you know, there are layers of decisions that the city is going to be in the driver's seat on 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 this site. And so so, you know, by that very nature, it's it's very different than if this was a privately-owned, privately-owned site. But I think, you know, another thing I just want to point out is that unlike a block that would be an office building, a residential building has to have depths that lend themselves well to residential spaces. And so we're never going to see this entire block developed just as a cube, straight up, in 10 stories. We're going to see, you know, whether it's an, whether it's a couple L-shaped buildings, whether it's a collection of multiple buildings on the site, or, you know, if you can imagine a giant O looking down from above. I mean, that's one way to to create a residential building with a courtyard. to, to create a residential building with a courtyard. There's a lot of design things that we, we don't have figured out just yet. But I want to stress that this, this is not going to develop like a giant cube uh, in, in a 10-story building if we want residential to be a, a healthy part of it.
Mm-hmm. Definitely. And just to make it abundantly clear, um, when we talk about what we control and things, um, is there, should, should we um, put out the RFP, we get the respondents, and we look at all of them and we're like, we hate this. Like, you're building to 10 stories, it's not delivering what we want in terms of affordability. Is there anything at all that stops the council from saying, you know what, screw this, we're doing this again?
No. Uh, uh, um, in, in my time at the city, um, we've had multiple RFPs that we've walked away from, or the developer and the city have mutually agreed that this wasn't coming together. Um, so, yes, there's nothing forcing you to accept the proposals. There's nothing forcing you to accept the deal that gets negotiated even once you start working with one team. Um, you're not, you're not bound until you s- sign those development agreements.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinney, questions?
I'm going to pass and I'll just ask my questions to Director offline.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, ready for questions?
Sort of along the lines of what Director Stoudt was saying before, um, we could theoretically in this RFP, uh, request owner occupied units as well, either condominiums or co-op units. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding. I mean, we, we could, we could require that. Matt, sorry, Director Walker.
Yeah. So, yeah, so you could absolutely um, uh, request, require that, request that as part of it. Um, and we would just see if, um, development partners could make that work and come forward with a proposal.
Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question for Director Walker. Matt, I appreciated the clarity of your comment about the funding and what we could do with it if we, um, if more than $9 million is returned to the city for this project, because we have a lot of goals for what we want to do here, such as more affordability than what the RFP might allow at that number. So if there's more money coming back in, we could return the funding um, to affordable housing, for example. I'm wondering if, in your opinion, a higher height limit along this stretch would increase the value of the property?
Yes. I, I can't tell you how much. Um, we're currently working with um, our appraiser to just try to gauge what that would be. But yes, if you're allowing more development to happen, you're fundamentally making it more valuable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Bennett, I think your hand is still up. And if that's true, then I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. What is before us is Alder Rumel's amendment to increase the height on the back portion of the lot to six stories. Is there discussion, Alder Rumel?
Oh, Mayor, I had one more question for Director Stoudt.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So for the Plan Commission, the staff report reported that the existing 10-4 configuration was flexible enough to accomplish many of our goals. Could you just talk about how staff came to that conclusion?
Sure. Thank you. Um, you know, I think we looked to uh, some other examples nearby. Uh, the best one, uh, that I think, you know, many here are aware of is on the 1,000 block of East Washington Avenue where we have The Breeze and The Lyric together. There's a, an 11-story building on the East Washington Avenue frontage, and then back on East Mifflin Street facing the elementary school, there's a four-story component with uh, deeply affordable units. It's that Section 42 or 9% tax credit uh, subsidy level that was able to um, to, to leverage the affordability in The Breeze on the backside along, along Mifflin. And I think that that's one model that, uh, that we have staff, we have, as staff have looked at, where we see that 9% tax credit building uh, right alongside a market rate, much, much taller building. Um, that's something that, uh, that I think we would, we already have the flexibility to achieve on the Brayton Lot with the height limits as they are today. So that was, you know, that was the thought we had. And it, it's really all connected to the discussion that we've been uh, having together this evening, that, you know, we, we think the, the 10 and the four um, really offers a lot of flexibility with putting together different combinations of affordability, uh, combinations of buildings on the site to achieve a lot of goals all at once as a city.
And just one follow-up to clarify. So on, on, for The Lyric, on that, that section of East Washington, that is, falls into Urban Design District Eight, which is ordinance-directed height limits. Is that, that's correct? Although they've been changed pretty regularly.
That's correct.
Thank you. Mayor, are we gonna, did people then, are we going to just comment? And should I keep talking if I want to make my, my motivation? Or should I wait and just get in line?
No, you should go right ahead, Alder.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank everyone for considering this amendment. And I even, I want to thank the sponsors too, because I didn't think about why this would be changed, because, you know, it's been this way since 2012. And, and who knew anything would ever happen in the Brayton Lot? So, um, so it started me thinking like, okay, what are my goals for this site? And, you know, we went through that, the, the public information process and have a survey, and all that's on the city website, if you all haven't seen it. And overwhelmingly, people wanted affordable housing, whether it was rental or owner occupied. But, so I started thinking, okay, what do I want for this site? And my goal is maximum affordability, not maximum units. And I also think there's a sweet spot. So I appreciate the opportunity to think about the sweet spot between the, the step down to the neighborhood, which is currently four, and I would propose six, that could not only sort of be a great transition, similar to what we do in Urban Design District Eight, but also be a place where we could potentially achieve the, the, these 9% tax credit type um, buildings, which generally, in my experience, are built from wood construction. And I, I just think that it's, at the end of the day, we're probably will end up with that look. So I, I honestly, with all respect to the people who say, we could be creative, I don't really know what we'll see that would be better than that outcome, which I think would give us market rate housing, the workforce housing at 60 to 80%, and, you know, potentially some lower um, 30 to 50 or 60% area median income, and a mix of, and it's, you know, it could be like four buildings, it could be a big H, I don't know what it will look like. But I just thought that I would put this forward and I hope that you will support it. Um, you know, it's funny, tonight, you might have noticed, we had a map amendment for core spaces. That was pretty darn creative, okay? Look what they did. They, they put four different looking buildings on a block, uh, and came up with this, you know, the model that we hope will succeed with the land use for uh, the lure for the student housing. And then they came with a map amendment. Because they agreed to do it more affordable, our ordinance allowed them to step up in height. So they did. So that was like the entire package of like, a thing, you know, a whole thing you knew it would look like. So, you know, that's one way to do it, not doing it in the front end. And I understand we own this parcel, but I just would hope that you would consider that. Um, we can always change things if a developer comes up with something we didn't expect. Like, I faced with that at 702 East Washington, where the Urban Design District limit says it's a 10-story building, and the developer says, oh, and you could have a two bonus story, but the developer proposed 14. And I thought about that, I'm like, oh, maybe, maybe that would be okay. I mean, all the other buildings are about the same height. And, but anyway, so I'll stop there. And I, hopefully I don't need to talk again, but I certainly hope that you will um, consider this. I've spoken to th- um, three different affordable housing developers who say this is, they do, they use stick building. So I talked to Ted Matcom at Gorman and Company, I talked to Rich Arneson at Stonehouse, and then Helen Bradbury came to our neighborhood meeting and spoke to that, kind of confirmed that this was, my knowledge was correct. So at some point, um, the neighborhood meeting was really terrific. There was 50-plus people and a range of like the established, you know, long-term residents and younger residents. And they were really, they listened to each other. And everybody agreed that they all want affordable housing. There's nobody saying, no, we don't want that here. They just want, you know, kind of what they knew. And then maybe it could be a little taller than four, but they wanted to respect the neighborhood character of, of a historic area, which is part of what's in our comp plan, to do context-sensitive development. So thank you for um, listening and considering, and I hope you will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to uh, thank the sponsors for putting this forward, because it spurred some important discussion. But I'd also like to thank Alder Rumel for putting forth a compromise. Uh, last week on our, in our um, passing the budget, we finished up the evening with a compromise on the Public Information Officer and the Traffic Engineer. It's not a compromise I particularly wanted to see. I was in favor of, of having the Public Information Officer funded at the level that was in the executive budget. But I'm also aware that compromise is important in terms of getting things done here as a body. We're also talking about 40 units here, apparently, the difference between six stories and 10 stories in this particular section, which is a little more than a quarter of the overall lot space that's allocated, which addresses this kind of narrative that's been out there with a lot of the emails that we received. We gotta do 10 stories. Uh, if we don't do 10 stories, we're undermining the, the quest for more affordability in our, our city. I guess I would like to remind my colleagues that we are so bef- far behind in the number of units necessary. Build, the difference between, these 40 units are not going to flip the script and increase affordability across the board. Even if we were to build thousands of more units every year than we are now, the best we're likely to do is temper off the increases in our, in rents. We're not going to drive it down. The only way we get affordability is through subsidizing. Let me say that again. We basically cannot build ourselves out of the affordable housing crisis alone. We need market interventions and we need subsidies. So I'm a little worried because of all the emails made it sound like this was a, um, if we don't, that more units would necessarily bring about affordability. And I think that's questionable. And in fact, we may get in a situation here because we don't exactly know, according to Director Walker, where the economies of scale kick in, that with these taller buildings may actually cost us more on a per-unit basis. And yes, we can design an RFP that says that we have to have a lot of affordability, but that does not come at zero price. I have a master's in economics, but you don't need a master's in economics to understand the concept of opportunity cost. If the units cost more, requiring a greater expenditure of our Affordable Housing Fund and TIF funds to be able to buy down and make those units affordable, those are funds that we're not using somewhere else in our city. That means less affordability elsewhere in our city, because we have a scarcity of funds. We haven't, we do not have an unlimited amount of money to subsidize housing. We know from the Housing Snapshot Report that the market cannot deliver, without those subsidies, cannot deliver affordable housing. It simply cannot. Developers cannot build what the average Madisonian needs. So increasing units by themselves does not get us what we want, at least certainly if the increase is so marginal as only a difference of 40 units. And lastly, I want to speak to this idea of stepping down to the neighborhood. It's not, it's not a concept that is abhorrent. It's rather natural in the sense that folks, folks who live in this neighborhood have a reasonable expectation that the step back to their neighborhood would be pleasing. It does not mean those, this is the, the rise of the NIMBYs opposing this project. They've agreed, most of it, again, will be 10 stories. Almost three-quarters of the project will be 10 stories. So this difference of just 40 units, to me, shows some respect to the neighborhood. And it shows respect to the possibility that we can get deeper affordability in that section that's currently mapped at four floors. And I would rather bet on that than the alternative. I trust staff who've looked at this for a long time. And I also appreciate the district alder. And I'm a little worried of, well, I'm not accusing the sponsors of the change to 10 stories engaging in just performative politics, but pushing for more units and more units and thinking that that gets us affordability loses some of the nuance of this discussion. So I appreciate the compromise at six stories. I'm going to be supporting it. Um, I, I think that there's been a lot of good discussion, but I think the compromise has merit, and I ask my colleagues to support it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Yeah, um, I'm going to support the compromise as well. But I did want to kind of share some thoughts I have with my fellow Alders. Um, one is, the need for affordable housing may drastically change the composition of some of the neighborhoods in all of our districts. So I remind everyone, as we make these decisions, that we need to share that burden. I'm not one that's convinced that 10-plus stories skyscrapers equals affordable housing, or leads us on the way to affordable housing. Now, obviously, people feel like more units help affordability. There's some logic to that. But I question whether those 10-plus story, or even doubling those all over the city is the answer. And I think what we heard today is a community that's reacting to those kinds of thoughts. They've invested their hard-earned life savings in the neighborhoods that they bought into. So there has to be some expectation that we at least um, listen to these individuals and consider, you know, some of the things that they're saying. And we're all going to deal with this kind of, with this kind of issue, trust me, because we have this real need for affordable housing. I love hearing today where there might be some, some compromise to, to that, that we don't have to have a skyscraper landscape all over the city. That's not the city I bought into. It's not the neighborhood I bought into either. And I'm sure that a lot of other people are feeling the same thing. Um, I like what one of my old county colleagues said in public comments. She said, that site is the major issue. So it depends on where it is, what the composition of that neighborhood is, and then we have to make those logical decisions. But I think the other major issue is, these residents ask for input into the process. And I'm glad that um, the alder said she heard a lot of input from different um, individuals in her community, and they all agree that they want affordable housing. And I think that's the approach we need to, to get to. So I'm definitely gonna support the amendment. But just, just remember, this isn't just about this particular site. We're all going to be dealing with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Thank you. Um, so I do also want to thank the people that weighed into this. Um, it's truly amazing to um, hear from people from many, many different walks of life and vantage points. I especially want to thank the 92 people that supported um, the original um, motion via um, I especially want to thank the 92 people that supported the original motion via a call to action. And also the Marquette Neighborhood Association, who overwhelmingly supported the 10-story height map. And that is not to say that the folks that weighed in, that were apprehensive about the height map amendment, were not worthy. I do think, though, that this, what is the alternate that is in front of us today is not a compromise. It's a moot point, and dare I say, a cop-out. We know that with the downtown two-story bonus, two bonus stories, we'd essentially be able to achieve six stories anyways. So putting in an amendment for six stories seems pretty facetious and doesn't really get us anywhere. To those that are apprehensive, I implore us to not close the door to option two before seeing what's behind the door. For those that are concerned about what 10 stories may or may not do, I encourage you to look across the street from this development site at the St. John's redevelopment. That development delivers more 30% to 50% AMI units, which is at about 70 to 80 units of the deep affordability than a 9% credit building. I repeat, across the street from this site delivers more deeply affordable units plus units at 60% AMI and market rate units. So for those that are hoping to maximize affordability, I'd like to look at that model and see, and really ask ourselves, do we want to deny that potential at this site? And I believe that's not what we should be doing. At the end of the day, I hope that we can think and ask ourselves truly, if we cannot accept the potential of 10 stories at this site, two blocks away from the Capitol, near tens of thousands of jobs, rights by everything that a home that is in need of affordable housing needs, then truthfully, where can we? If we can't accept that potential here, are you going to accept it in your neighborhoods? I think that the debate we're going to have later on in this meeting would say no. So I think that in addition to recognizing that there are many, many options out there, including the 4% plus 4 housing credit, what was done with the Novo, with, with Stonehouse Development, we are making a huge assumption here that WIDA will award a 9% credit deal for this site. Knowing the pressures of development elsewhere throughout the entire state, knowing that there's pressures to develop, especially in rural communities and communities outside of Madison, and recognizing that Madison has received a lot of money from WIDA with the 9% credit deals, it is a huge assumption for us to make to presume that WIDA, that we are entitled to receive a 9% credits for this site. And let us not ignore that potential, that we may need to move to other financing sources, which would require us to look at different height and story tools for this site. At the end of the day, I think this, that the opposition relies upon hypotheticals and what-ifs and doesn't consider the potential of what if this works out really well and delivers us something that we could, could never have imagined. And that is what makes me excited about using something that is land-banked, that is not displacing anyone, that is delivering every single thing we always ask for. So please don't fall for this moot point and let us move forward with amending the height map.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other, oh, so close. Alder Field?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share just the observation, too, that this is some of the best bus service in the city, being on two bus rapid transit lines. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to put density here and more units is what that means for me. I think we've also heard some creative ideas here tonight about possible ownership opportunities in some of these units, especially if we can't afford or wouldn't want to fill the entire building with deeply affordable housing. I think mixed-income housing would make a lot of sense here. And we heard that that's expensive, that we could exhaust some of the standard or conventional vehicles for financing in the project that would provide that. And so we would need funding. And what was news to me tonight is the proposal or the prospect of selling the property for more than $9 million and using the money that we earn or gain from that sale on affordable housing here at this site by buying into the financing of the property. So for that reason, I am looking at the increased height limit as a way to hopefully sell the property for more than $9 million and reuse that funding for that purpose, more affordability at the site. And again, I think this area makes a lot of sense for more people to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govindarajan?
Thank you. I think Alder Field beat me by clicking that button by a second. Director Stoudt, can we pull up that height map again, just so I can refer to that? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I quickly want to acknowledge, like, we had a fair bit of students and young people come and speak and register today on this item. So I just, real quick, want to give props to that. That's not something we see often in this room, and it's something that I know was very similar at the neighborhood meeting and Plan Commission as well. So I, that's really cool, in my opinion. Even though I'm a sponsor of this, the original amendment to increase this to 10 stories, I've been very conflicted on this throughout the process. I would speak to Alder Bennett and then be like, oh, yeah, that's a really good, that's a really good point. And then I would speak to Alder Rumel and be like, oh, I hadn't considered that. And I was 50/50 this whole time. And even until this meeting, I was very much like, I really need to hear everything happening, and I had really no idea. But listening to all the discussion, which I really appreciate from everyone here, I think just, I am, I still believe, leading towards pushing this up to 10 stories. A lot of this is because, looking at that map, there's a block to the right side of Brayton Lot that is currently a height limit of three stories. About half of that block is going to be facing 10 stories. And when we keep talking about maximizing affordability, I am curious why if six stories is how we can maximize affordability, why the entire block is not six stories. Like, that is a question that's continued to bug me throughout this, and I don't think I've been able to get that answer through this process just yet. So it makes me think that if we are able to have this RFP and we can't have that requirement since we, as a city, are in the driver's seat, we can require a little bit more affordability, even deeper affordability. I would rather favor that. I don't necessarily think that, I, I agree with Alder Tag Evers, where we're not going to be able to build our way out of just this affordability crisis right now, but we are in the driver's seat, and I do think that's a very rare opportunity for us to include that. But the way I'm kind of looking at this is, do we want to have the developers come up with an idea, and then if they want to build more than six stories, do we want them to submit a map amendment similar to what Core Spaces just did? Or do we want to just allow that? And if they want to build up to 10 stories, they can. Otherwise, they can still build up to whatever lower limit they want. It's kind of reactive versus proactive in my perspective, and there's nothing wrong with either, but I think I generally prefer being proactive about the situation. So with that, I would prefer, I think, if the whole block was 10 stories. There are a couple parts of this, the arguments that I've heard for six stories that kind of fall apart that I hope I addressed, but I encourage fellow alders to also vote for 10 stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue, assuming Alder Bennett, that your hand is just still up and not for the second time. Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in queue. The motion is the Rumel Amendment on six stories, anticipating disagreement. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Alder Slack?
No.
Alder Slack, no. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vitiver?
No.
Alder Vitiver, no. Aldo Ahaly?
Aye.
Ahaly, aye. Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Bennett, no. Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry?
No.
Alder Curry, no. Alder Duncan?
No.
Alder Duncan, no. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field?
No.
Alder Field, no. Alder Figaro Cole?
No.
Alder Figaro Cole, no. Alder Govindarajan?
No.
Alder Govindarajan, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney, aye. Alder Knox?
Aye.
Alder Knox, aye. Aldo Latimer versus excused. Aldo Madison?
No.
Aldo Madison, no. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford?
No.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, no. Aldo Miyazze?
No.
Aldo Miyazze, no. Alder Rumel?
Aye.
Alder Rumel, aye. We have seven ayes, 12 nos.
With seven ayes, the amendment fails. We're back to the main motion, which is an amendment to 10 stories. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion and continuing to anticipate disagreement, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you very much. Alder Slack?
Aye.
Alder Slack, aye. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Revere?
No.
Alder Revere, no. Alder Vitiver?
Aye.
Alder Vitiver, aye. Aldo Ahaly?
No.
Aldo Ahaly, no. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan?
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field?
Aye.
Alder Field, aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Knox?
No.
Alder Knox, no. Aldo Latimer versus still excused. Aldo Madison?
Aye.
Aldo Madison, aye. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Aldo Miyazze?
Aye.
Aldo Miyazze, aye. Alder Rumel?
No.
Alder Rumel, no. With 14 ayes, five nos.
With 14 ayes, that item passes. And we will go on then to item four. Since items four and 39 are related, is there any objection to taking them up together? Seeing no objection, we'll take up items four and 39 together. Let's get a motion on the floor. President Curry?
Will to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Alder Slack?
I would like to move to refer to our next council meeting.
Alder Slack moves referral to the December 5th council meeting. Is there a second? Alder Harrington McKinney will second. Alder Slack choose to speak to the motion?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. So I'm getting briefed tomorrow morning on the recommendations being made in the West Area Plan. Other alders on the West Side were briefed on Friday. I also think there's some confusion that needs to be cleared up around some of the proposed changes, and I would like that opportunity to digest what's being recommended in the West Area Plan and have more discussion with my constituents. I asked about this with Attorney Haas before the meeting and was told, but please respond, if I have this wrong, Director Stoudt, that a referral, this wasn't an urgent decision that needed to be made tonight, but was hoping to have it made before the end of the year. Can I ask Director Stoudt to respond to that?
Yep.
Thanks, Alder Slack. So it's true that there's no deadline to this, but holding up this process, as I mentioned to you, does, you know, keep staff resources away from other really high priorities, including the West Area Plan and Northeast Area Plan and others. So we're, we're hopeful that the council might be willing to act on it this evening.
Alder Slack?
I do think it's really important for big changes like this to make sure that residents are clear on things and understand things. And I would, I am asking for the opportunity to have those discussions with them and also have a clear understanding in my head about what's being planned for the West Area while I have those discussions. So it's just a couple weeks. I'm hoping, I'm hoping to have that privilege.
Thank you, Alder. We had anticipated a brief presentation from Kirsty Lott, who's on the planning staff, if that's desired. Or would you like to, was the preference to deal with the question of referral first?
No.
Okay. So we'll deal with the question of referral first, then, are any additional questions for staff on referral? Seeing none, is there discussion on the question of referral? Seeing no discussion, is there objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of Roll call has been requested. So all those in favor of referral to the December 5th meeting, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll. Sorry.
Thank you. Alder Slack? Alder Slack, aye. Alder Tischler?
Aye.
Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Revere?
Aye.
Alder Revere, aye. Alder Vitiver?
No.
Alder Vitiver, no. Aldo Ahaly?
Aye.
Aldo Ahaly, aye. Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Bennett, no. Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry?
No.
Alder Curry, no. Alder Duncan?
No.
Alder Duncan, no. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Field?
No.
Alder Field, no. Alder Figaro Cole?
No.
Alder Figaro Cole, no. Alder Govindarajan?
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney, aye. Alder Knox?
Aye.
Alder Knox, aye. Aldo Madison?
No.
Aldo Madison, no. Aldo Martinez-Rutherford?
Aye.
Aldo Martinez-Rutherford, aye. Aldo Miyazze?
Aye.
Aldo Miyazze, aye. Alder Rumel?
Aye.
Alder Rumel, aye. We have 11 ayes, eight nos.
With 11 ayes, the item is referred to the December 5th meeting. Excuse me, both the items, items four and 39 are referred to the December 5th meeting. We'll bring us to item five, and item 30 is related. Is there any objection to taking up items five and 30 together? Seeing no objection, President Curry?
Move to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt items five and 30. Are there questions for staff? I'm sorry. These are the Core Spaces-related items. Do I need to read the legislature numbers and titles? No. Okay. Questions for staff on items five and 30. Seeing no questions for staff. Discussion on items five and 30. Seeing, Alder Govindarajan?
I promise this won't be deja vu. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this process has been definitely much better than last time around. I realize the Core Spaces isn't here, so I can't like congratulate them, but, so this with this build of Core Spaces, I want to say that there is a discounted model for students. It is not perfect, and I do want to bring attention to that, but, and the, the reason I say it's not perfect is because now we have like the rent prices for Olaf Madison, which was their previous which was their previous building that did have the affordability model. And the way I say this is because, like, in their suite plus that they showcased earlier today, one of the four bedrooms without the discount goes for roughly $1,250. That is typically the price most students pay for, like, a one-bedroom or like a studio. So, like, the materials being used for this building, the type of, like, just, it's a little bit high par, if that makes sense, whereas a four-bedroom is, where you're paying for a four-bedroom and just one of those bedrooms is worth a separate one-bedroom that's normally worth, sorry, that was explained terribly, but I hope that's understood. But the thing I want to highlight here is actually the LoRa agreement. I was able to sit down with the Core Spaces team and kind of just discuss a little bit with the, kind of the blessing of Alder Revere, who I appreciate, to kind of, I really felt like 30 years was not enough when it comes to affordability, especially because this problem is not going away anytime soon. We were able to negotiate up to 40 years, and also it was mentioned that the liquidated damages were able to go up to 8 million, up from 5 million. This is something that I encourage the city staff and alders to pay attention to more going forward, moving more closer to 40-year agreements and having more, well, obviously the liquidated damages have to manage to whatever the risk would be. But if that is broken, for example, the 8 million goes almost directly into the Affordable Housing Fund. So I just want to use this moment to kind of encourage staff to go towards 40 years and alders as well. But overall, have no objection with this, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rummel?
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Govindarajan mentioned the earlier project, which I never supported after it was reconsidered. It was no. I wasn't willing to throw away housing for really, really expensive housing. But this is the opposite. This is 165 units. We're still tearing down 13 buildings, and I don't know how many beds, but we're replacing them. There's like a trade-off. It's not like they go away and they're gone forever. So, you know, I think that's a real win, and I appreciate the work of the alders to get, and the city and the UW, to figure out how to, kind of figure out a new program for us. I mean, maybe it exists elsewhere, but it's new for us, and I, I think it's really exciting, and I look forward to having more projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. It's been moved and seconded to adopt items five and 30. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of items five and 30. That brings us to the end of exclusions from the consent agenda. Are there any additional items from the floor or announcements? If not, Alder Slack, it's your turn. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.